Yes, Township of Howell Zoning Board of Addressing Meeting, March 28th, 2022. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following matter. First, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 14th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9 North, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature when the chairman opens the hearing up for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling in, you could press star nine to raise or lower your hand, and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Eileen. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Oh.
Mr. Mertens.
Yeah.
Mr. Moretti is excused. Mr. Orozco.
Here.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
You're muted. Right. I don't think he heard you.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
There you go.
Chairman Seiya.
Present, here.
And Chairman Nansen is excused. You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, well, everyone, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Mr. Barrick, please swear in the professionals.
Yes. Uh. Raise your right hand, as Charlie already has. Do you swear that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay. Item five, Eileen, approval of minutes. Do we have any minutes?
There are no minutes to approve.
Thank you. Item six, vouchers. Do we have any vouchers?
There are no vouchers.
Item seven, do we have any correspondence?
Uh, yes, we have a letter from Dan Sahin, attorney for Freehold Welding, asking their case be adjourned for tonight, and they will reschedule at a later date. They are still working out what they need for the site. They also waived the provisions of New Jersey Statute 40:55D 10.3 with regards to the timeliness of the hearing.
Okay, so that is case number... Bear with me here. Oh, that's Mr. That's, um...
It's BA 21-23.
23, right? Freehold Welding. All right, this case is carried?
And they're looking for the first meeting in June, and they will renotice.
To the first meeting in June, and they will renotice?
Correct.
So we have an expiration date of, what, 30 June?
Well, so, Eileen, I would just ask, we had a meeting, Charlie and I, and John were out there today with them, and they asked to be carried to the first meeting in June, so if we just reach out to them and ask for an extension of time, they will give us an extension of time.
Well, it sounds like they consented to the extension. The only issue is, it doesn't seem to be dated on it. So-
Yeah, so they asked for the first meeting in June, and they will renotice.
So then why don't we carry, why don't we establish the date is the end of June, two meetings in June, and-
Yeah.
Okay. If that works, Mr. Chairman.
That works, as long as everyone agrees. Any other correspondence, Eileen?
Uh, yes, just to remind everyone, the board will be staying on Zoom for now, for the time being.
Okay. Um. That'll help, you know, with, um, the folks that we have, okay? And then... Next item, and no, any further correspondence?
No, that's all for tonight.
All right, resolutions. All right, first resolution. Case number BA 20-101 Foxtrot. AAR SHW Property LLC. Resolution granting final major site approval. Eligible voters, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Orozco, Seiya, and Nansen. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make that motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Back on.
Got a second. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya.
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Case number BA 21-14 IPP Solar LLC. Resolution denying conditional use variance preliminary and final major site plan. Eligible voters, Cantor, Hughes, and Mertens.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mertens?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Eileen.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Next item up. Case number BA 21-27 David Candell. Resolution granting use variance, C variances, and lot consolidation approval. Eligible voters, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Orozco, and Seiya.
Mr. Cantor.
I'll make a motion first.
Sorry.
I make a motion to approve this.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
And we have a second?
I'll second that. Give it to Jose.
Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya.
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, so what we have next is item number nine, which are applications before the board. Case number BA 21-18 Mohammed Quayem. Type is a bulk variance for single family dwelling on undersized lot. Description. Application of Mohammed A. Quayem as applicant and owner seeking bulk variance approval to construct a new two-story single-family dwelling with a basement on a property serviced by a septic system as the existing two-story dwelling on the property has become fire damaged. The dwelling will be accessed from Adelphia Road by a 36-foot by 18-foot wide asphalt paved driveway. A concrete walkway is also proposed at the front of the dwelling to provide access from the driveway to the house on premises known as Block 152, Lot 31, 709 Adelphia Farmingdale Road, AKA County Route 524. This application was partially heard on 6 December 2021, when it was carried to January 24th, 2022, with no further notice. On January 24th, 2022, this application was carried to March 28th, 2022, with no further notice. The expiration, expiration date of this application is 30 April 2022. The eligible voters are Cantor, Mertens, Moretti, Seiya, and Nansen. Mr. Barrick?
Yes, are the applicants in the room?
We have to bring them in?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just say that I watched the video, if I can certify if-
Excellent. Eileen, did you catch that?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman. Members of the board, Dante Alfieri on behalf of the applicant. How's everybody tonight?
We're doing well. You hear me? We can hear you loud and clear.
All right, perfect. As the chairman stated, we were here back in December. We provided testimony as it relates to the present application, which is to replace the fire-damaged home with a new two-story single-family home. We had Matt Wilder provide testimony. He's going to be the individual to provide testimony again. He provided, um, most of his engineering testimony. I believe there were some questions raised by the board and some of the residents, which Matt will touch on when he gets into his testimony, and then he will also speak to the planning side of things. And I believe Matt is sworn.
Just, thank you, yep.
So is Matt the only professional we're going to have to swear in tonight?
Yes.
He was already sworn, I think, from the last meeting, right?
He was previously sworn in?
I was.
Mr. Barrick?
Yeah, so, Mr. Wilder, you're still under oath, and the testimony you give will, uh, obviously continue to be under oath. Do you understand that?
I do.
Okay. He may proceed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barrick.
So, Matt, if you could just give a quick synopsis of what you testified to last meeting, just so the board is oriented to the site itself, and then we'll get into the meat of what you're going to talk about tonight.
Sure, so we gave a little bit of a property history, talking about the subject property. The fact that the home, the existing home was fired, damaged, gave a little bit of a rundown of, you know, sort of what surrounds the property. When we started to discuss the variances we were seeking, we did not get beyond discussing the front yard setback. Two questions arose when you were discussing that, and first was the septic system, its location. The board wanted some confirmation that where the septic system would be proposed, the soils on site could accommodate that, and then furthermore, there were questions about a potential Monmouth County taking that would result in a reduced setback to the home. So, as it relates to those two items, we did actually just receive Monmouth County Board of Health. The plot plan that was submitted by my office does depict the location of that septic system, and we also submitted plans by the septic designer that depicted some additional design information. The septic system is a typical gravity septic system. The soil logs that were done came back relatively positively in that we didn't need to do a mounted system or pressure dosing system, so we had adequate depth to the groundwater and adequate permeability for your standard traditional septic system. You'll also notice that we have elected to maintain the front setback of the proposed home, and really, the main reason for that is really the property to the west 711 Adelphia Road. They have a rather large detached garage that exists behind the, the home, and if we push any further back, our proposed dwelling will sort of be in between the adjacent house and detached garage. That area is where they sort of use, they use that area for parking. So I have an aerial I can share to, to illustrate that. I know previously, Mr. Conliffe had pulled up Google Maps, whichever is easier for the board, just to maybe be able to visually understand what I'm referring to.
Matt, if you have the arrow available, you can just pull it up, make sure you-
Absolutely. All right. So, does everybody see that?
Mr. Wilder, is this being marked, or Dante's just been marked as an exhibit?
Yeah, we would mark this as an exhibit. And I don't remember if we had marked any exhibits at the prior meeting.
Rich, do you recall?
I don't-
Mr. Chairman? We did see a, we did see a plan at the last hearing, so there must be some exhibits marked.
There's a list of exhibits from, at least on what's been on, on the site from, on the, you know, on the, on the website from A1 to A11.
But you want to just mark this as A12?
Like one, this doesn't look like one of them.
Yeah, this is not, this is not one of them, so-
Why don't we call this A12, then?
Okay. And so what this is, this is just an aerial photograph. It's from March of 2021. It's from a service called Nearmap. They do multiple aerial photography of the state of New Jersey, and I wanted to try to pull an aerial that wasn't sort of overwhelmed with vegetation. And, and everyone can see my screen currently, correct? So this is, this is the subject property. It's on the right side of the, of the aerial image. To the left is 711 Adelphia Road, the red, red house, red roof house anyway, and red roof detached garage. So this is the, the shed on the subject property, and what we're looking to do is slide the proposed home back further than the existing home sits. The current front setback of the existing home is 26.4 feet, but we do not want to go much further because we don't, it, it would, it would be awkward for this property if the house abutted this, this sort of parking area and turnaround area, and in our, my opinion, it would also make it pretty incongruent, you know, streetscape, if you will, with varying setbacks. So this is, this is the plot plan, and this is what we're currently proposing. This is the septic system that I was referencing, that we received Monmouth County Board of Health for, and this is the shed, again, flipping back to the aerial, this is this green roofed shed over here. And what we wanted to do was, like I said, try to maintain that existing shed, which I'll speak to a little bit when I talk to the variance for it, to provide some storage, but it was really to, to prevent the house from sort of being, you know, in this area where the neighbor would have vehicles constantly, you know, coming in, coming out. So we wanted to try to be in line with those existing homes. So that was sort of relative to where we had stopped at the prior application. We didn't really get into the, the variance testimony. So unless anyone has any questions about the septic approval, I'll be happy to sort of delve into the, the variances that we're seeking and the justifications for them.
Well, let's hold up one second, Matt. Charlie, do you have any?
So, I'll just share my screen real quick, Mr. Chair, and I'll just, um, elaborate on a couple of points that Mr. Wilder brought up. So, uh, this is the septic approval that our septic plans that Mr. Wilder provided as part of their application of recent mission. I believe today he circulated, or Mr. Alfieri's office circulated the Monmouth County Board of Health approval for this septic system. I just asked that that be submitted formally to the board as a condition to any approval. And, um, you know, I think there was mentioned that it's not a mounted system, so it's not traditionally mounted in the sense of, you know, you have a flat piece of property and your water table's two feet down, so you now have to build a property up, you know, four feet to get your separation and put the system in. There is some elevation change in the back. A lot of it is necessitated because there's a lot of slope change. The property falls off drastically to the wooded area to the rear of the site, so there is some fill. You know, three and a half, four feet on the far end of the system, but it's tucked in the back of the site. It's not something in the front yard area that's going to be readily visually apparent from, you know, cars driving down the street, so. So I think, obviously, you know, they've gotten their approval. It's in the rear yard. That lessens the impact, and then, obviously, you know, like I said, because of the existing site topography, that's what's necessitating the fill. It's not, you know, something that they're just doing, you know, artificially to, to create a level area so they can use it. It's, it's necessitated by, by the layout of the septic system. I just ask if the board does real favorably. They did show the septic system footprint on the plan, just revise the grading so it's one complete plan, you know, for construction purposes. And then, um, one thing that I brought up, I spoke with Mr. Wilder this morning. Obviously, there was concern about right-of-way takings, you know, as far as a C variance application, what a Monmouth County planning board typically doesn't opine, and they'll issue a letter of no interest. That's not to say that, you know, 10 years from now, the county doesn't want to do a roadway widening program, and then they want to take right-of-way. So I had made a suggestion to Mr. Wilder and Mr. Alfieri's office, possibly looking at moving the driveway from the, this is south, or sorry, uh, the bottom of the pages is north here, so this is flipped from the aerial that Mr. Wilder previously showed. But, um, right now, the driveway is on the east side of the dwelling. You can see with how the dwelling is shaped. There's a, a back bedroom area here, which is actually within the footprint of where the old structure used to be. Um, you know, I asked them to look into maybe moving the driveway over to this side and utilizing that space. Not to say that they have to build the driveway right now, all the way to that point, but at some point in the future, if the county does take right-of-way taking, you know, they still have an additional, you know, 18 feet of driveway on their property, you know, to, to not have to come back to the board to get a variance approval for extending the driveway in the future. In the alternative, I also, um, you know, asked Mr. Wilder if they could just flip the dwelling and do the same thing, just extend the driveway back. You know, mirror, mirror the dwelling in the existing, you know, location, just flipping it 180 degrees. I'll let Mr. Wilder pine to the feasibility of, of those two options and what implications that might have on impervious coverage, but I think, long story short, this is a fire-damaged structure. You know, they're kind of putting it in position with the existing septic system, you know, because of the fire, necessitating, you know, reconstructing the building and having to put in a new septic system. You know, I think we want to, as the board considers this, try to vet out all these eventualities. So if the board does real favorably, the applicant doesn't have to come back, you know, 10 years from now to get another variance for something that we can, you know, consider, consider tonight, so you can keep going, Mr. Wilder.
Sure, and, um, I, I think it's a good idea to adjust the driveway. We, we have no issue with the request. I will just update, and as Mr. Conliffe indicated, we did speak this morning. We will propose to relocate the driveway to the west side of the site so that we have that additional future expansion of the driveway if needed. The, in the short term, that does increase our impervious coverage. So, uh, on the plan, we were showing an impervious coverage of 17.1%. The shifting of the driveway and extending it to that rear, uh, that one-story portion of the home would increase our ask to 21% impervious coverage where 15% is permitted. But I do, we take no issue with the change, and it does sort of future protect any development on this property in the event that Monmouth County does do something with the right of way.
So, Mr. Wilder, there was two recommendations from Charlie. So the, the second one was turn the house. That would allow you to just use the existing and go further back, is that correct?
That would be, that would be correct, yes.
And you're not choosing that option?
At the, at the present time, no. I mean, I, it really is sort of six of one, half a dozen of the other. So I, I, if, if the board so chose that they prefer the driveway on the side that we're showing it, we would mirror the house. It's, 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 like I said, it, it doesn't make a difference either way. But we were proposed-
Sorry, and Mr. Seiya, just to clarify for the board too, so this doesn't mean that the applicant has to construct all the way to the footprint now. It's just if they want to at some point in the future expand it, they don't have to come back to the board to get approval to do that.
Roger.
Right, it's likely that, as, as currently constructed, the, the driveway would stop at the covered porch, but we would have the ability in the future to extend, extend it beyond that covered porch if needed.
Makes sense, thank you.
Okay, um, so, just to again review the variances, and I'll speak to the adjusted impervious coverage variance. We have a lot area variance, two acres is required, and .329 exists. A minimum front setback of 50 feet is required, and we're proposing 33.8. A minimum side yard setback of 30 feet is required, and we're proposing 15.4. And then the maximum impervious coverage, 15% is allowed, and we are proposing 21%. And then just very quickly, on the front and side setbacks, we are actually improving existing conditions. The existing house has a front yard setback of 26.4 and a side yard setback of 12 feet, and we're increasing that to 33.8 into 15.4. So really, uh, and then the final variance is for the accessory shed. Because of its height, which is 13.6 feet, the setback needs to be one foot setback for each foot of height. It is 6.2 feet off the western property line, so we are requesting a variance for that setback as well. So the dimensional variances, so the, the lot area, and then the setback front and side are pretty straightforward hardship variances, or C1 variances. So 40:55D 70C1 states that this board can grant a variance relief if there is an extraordinary situation uniquely affecting this property. The property is just significantly and substantially undersized. It's a little bit tough to see on my plot plan, but you'll see a building envelope as it's shown. The required front yard is 200 feet. The property is only 192 feet deep on the left side and 209 feet deep on the right side. The required, the required side yard setbacks are 30 feet each. The property is only 74 feet wide, so when you plot the required setbacks, you really have no available building footprint. So I, I believe that fairly clearly illustrates the hardship. But I also believe that the variance is being sought can be granted under the C2 variance criteria as well, and that would also go for the shed, um, which is a flexible variance criteria. So 40:55D 70C2 states when appeal relating to a property would advance the MLUL, and furthermore, the benefit of the deviation substantiate away the detriment, a variance can be granted. So I, I don't see detriment associated with what is being sought. If, if I can just very quickly flip back to my aerial. You know, the, the front and, and side yard setbacks are just a function of the fact of how narrow the lot is. And then when you look at the shed, um, when you look at 711 and 713 Adelphia, you see they have much larger structures, very close to their side property line. And in heights that exceed our, our proposed shed or the existing shed. And in reality, if you've noticed on the architectural plans, we are not proposing a garage for this structure. So we really tried to minimize the impervious surfaces. So because we don't have a garage, there's certain inherent storage that garages provide that we don't have. So we're proposing to maintain the shed to provide some sort of accessory storage for our residential use. So again, although I don't believe there's a detriment, I do believe we advanced several goals of the Municipal Land Use Law. Goal A is to encourage municipal action to guide appropriate use or development of all lands in the state. This is a residentially-owned property. It should be developed residential. It was fire damaged, and it has just been a blight, uh, since, since it's been damaged. So what we're proposing to do is, is redevelop the property with, you know, a new home that meets current standards, which leads into goal B, which is to secure from fire, flood, panic, and other natural and man-made disasters. As the structure currently exists, it's, it's an unsafe structure. So when we remove this structure and build a, a new home, system with all building code requirements, I believe we certainly advance goal B. And then goal I of the Municipal Land Use Law is to provide a desirable visual environment. It sort of goes in line with A and B in that it's a fire-damaged structure that is just an absolute blight, and what we're proposing will certainly beautify the area and, and I think remove an unsafe structure, but also a, a structure that, even prior to the fire damage, I would argue, was not the most aesthetically pleasing. So for these reasons, I believe the variance is sought can be granted under the C2 variance criteria. So I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right, one second, one second. Jen, before we get to you, I'd like to go around the board.
Okay.
See if they have any questions.
Okay.
All right, so, Mr. Mertens?
Um, I may defer to after Jennifer gives her feedback on that. I do have a question, but I'd like to wait till after I hear her comment.
Got it. Mr. Stanton?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Cantor?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hughes?
This time, no question, sir.
Mr. Orozco?
I'm okay.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer, it's all yours.
So I would say that, you know, if this was a brand-new structure, um, we may have more comments, but it was damaged by fire. It's a residentially- Um, we may have more comments, but it was damaged by fire. It's a residentially owned lot. That you have some, I guess, rights to reestablish a residential use on this property. Um, I agree with the testimony in terms of the fact that it's a hardship. This is a two acre zone and the site is point three acres existing. So it is significantly undersized. Um, and I would also state, and, and Dante, you can correct me if I'm wrong. You did sell, you did provide buy sell letters, correct? I think I saw those in the record, right?
Yes, that is correct.
So, you know, when you sell, you send out those buy sell letters, it's basically like, if you want to buy my property? Or do you want, want to sell your property to make the site conforming? You got nothing back?
No.
Which means they have, you know, created the record. So that they can claim that this is a hardship. This is a significantly undersized lot. Um. So a lot of the, the, the percentages that we're talking about are anticipating that the lot is eighty thousand square feet. As opposed to, you know, point three acres, which is significantly less than that. Uh, I think the one issue, which I think Charlie adequately addressed was should the county want to take some property? Is there room on the property to park multiple vehicles? And I think, um, the testimony that was provided by extending the driveway and that was, that was agreed upon, correct?
Yes.
Um, so the bottom line is that, yeah, they may need additional coverage, which is up to the twenty-one percent, right, Matt?
Yes.
Um, versus the twelve thousand, or the twelve percent that's permitted in the zone.
I think it's fifteen, Jen.
It's not. It's twelve, but okay.
I thought somebody said two fifteen.
Yeah, I think they said fifteen, but it's actually twelve. And it's on the plan. It's twelve too, just so you know. Um, but. I, I don't take exception to it. I think it's a good plan because. If the county were to widen that road and I was on that road today and there's, there is a lot of, of improvements ma- being made to that. Uh, roadway in the event that the county does ultimately take property, we want to make sure that they have the availability to park multiple vehicles. So. I would take no exception to the request for the, for the coverage variance. Uh, the balance of the variances, the lot area, the width, the front yard setback. This, even the side yard setback, I think are all a product of the size of the property here. And let's not forget, this is not like a vacant lot that they're looking to put something on. There was a house here. It burned down. They're looking to just reestablish it. So. In my professional opinion, I think the applicant has met his burden. I think that Matt did a great job on the testimony. Um, in terms of providing both C one and C two criteria. So I would take no exception to what he have, has put forward. And I actually have absolutely no concerns about the request for the relief that they've asked for.
Okay. So Mr. Mertens, do you have your question now?
Yeah, um, the, I think the planning is, is speaks for itself. I mean, I totally agree. Uh, my. Question was just a follow-up from our December sixth meeting. Uh, one of the residents was concerned. About the leaching of the septic area back into the wetlands in the rear of the property. I just wanted to know. From Charlie or the, um, their, uh, engineer, if this would be satisfied, you know, would take care of that concern.
Good question. So the, the soil logs and the permeability that were, uh, obtained for the property actually came back better than we expected. Um, groundwater was at ninety-six inches and the soil was a K four soil. Um, K four, uh, it's a classification for how fast water moves through the soil. K five is the fastest, K zero is the slowest, K zero would essentially be zero. K five is anything greater than twenty inches per hour. So based upon the soils information, we got the depth to groundwater and how fast the water moves through. There, there's not going to be any surcharge from the septic system, uh. It would have no impact or, uh, on adjacent properties, wetlands or, or other.
So just to add to that, Mr. Merton, so it's the Monmouth County Board of Health. They have jurisdiction on the approval of. Individual subject systems for residential structures and they have issued an approval, which the applicant will provide a copy for the board's record. I think it's also just important to note that this isn't, you know, a, a property that's, you know, a hundred feet from available public sewer. This is like over thousands of feet away from the closest, you know, public sewer to, so to, to make, uh, one individual residential. Try, have to extend a main to have public sewer is just not feasible from a cost perspective. So. You know, I think, uh, they've gotten their approval from the Board of Health. They've agreed to, uh, you know, revise the plot plan to show the grading for the, the. The, the plans submitted to Board of Health. Um, I just want to put on the record too, I believe they agreed at the last hearing, they'll, they'll get a presence absence regarding any wetlands on the property. If there is anything, they'll get a, any permits that will be, that if, if there is wetlands, they'll get any permits that required. They said they'll get free old soil conservation district. Um, I believe they also do need a waiver from curb and sidewalk along the property frontage. Uh, anything on the south side of the street there, any of the adjacent front ends, none of them have it. So. You know, I wouldn't take the exception to the board granting that relief. And I just want to put it on the record. That the application was filed before the readoption of the town's sidewalk, uh, trust fund ordinance. So the board can grant relief without having to require the applicant to make a contribution to that fund. Um, and then they agreed to revise the driveway section to comply with the attached ordinance. Um, and get any utility and road opening permits as may be required with the project. So. Um, like, like Mr. Wilder said, it's undersized property. If they were to adhere to the thirty foot side yard setbacks. They'd only have fifteen feet a lot with to actually build a structure. I don't think a rail car type of structure would be visually or aesthetically pleasing to any of the residences or the neighbors. Uh, you know, adjacent to this property. So, yeah, I, I really don't take any issue to the application, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I just want to correct one thing. Mr. Bear was actually correct. The lot coverage was fifteen percent. The building coverage was ten per, or twelve percent. So this would increase the lot coverage to the twenty-one percent. But I still take no exception to the relief asked.
Got it. Thank you, Jen. Members of the board, anyone else have any questions at this time?
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Bear, last time we heard this application, we opened it up to public. Do we, shall we open up to public again for Q and A?
Yes, on the additional testimony that was provided today.
Okay. So board members, can I have a motion to open up to public for questions? Other professionals?
Motion to open the public, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hughes.
I'll second.
Mr. Mertens. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anybody abstaining? All right. Not seeing any. Okay, Eileen, we're opening it up to public.
Okay, the meeting will now open for public. If you're calling in. You could press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself. There's no one from the public raising their hair, hand currently.
Give it thirty more seconds. Okay, Eileen. Do we have anybody?
No one from the public.
All right. Can I get a motion from a board member to close the public, please? So moved. Okay. Second.
I'll second.
Stanton seconds. Thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So this, uh. This application is closed to public comment and questioning. So, um, Mr. Bear, Mr. Alfery.
Mr. Chair, we are, we are concluded with our testimony as you've heard from this meeting and the meeting in December. We're requesting, uh, both variant relief, um, to construct this, uh, single family home. To replace the fire damage prop. Requested the board act favorably tonight.
Okay. So. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to go ahead and make a motion. Uh, to approve this, uh, of course, uh, considering that we get the, um. Septic approval from the Board of Health that Charlie talked about in the updated septic plan, the updated plot plan with the elevations with the septic field. And it seems to be, uh, it seems to be a good solid plan to, uh, clean up this property and build a beautiful home. So my, uh, motion is to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do we have a second?
Back on.
Mr. Roscoe, second. Okay, Eileen, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor.
A vote yes with the stipulations, uh, proposed by Mr. Conliffe and Ms. Beam.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya.
Yes.
I bring up something, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Roscoe seconded. Is that okay if he wasn't certified? Just a clean thing, keep things clean.
Mr. Bear.
Well, hey, Mr. Roscoe, had you reviewed the prior hearing?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I didn't, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
Then we're good, then we're good, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry.
Thank you all. Eileen.
And Chairman Seiya.
Yes.
Application is approved.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the board, have a great evening.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone. Okay, uh, it's seven forty-seven. What do you say we continue on and get to the next application? You know. Mr. Stanton. Hmm, I believe you're, I believe you recused yourself on this next application.
Gabrielli Kennworth, yes.
Yes. So, um, Mr. Barrett and Mr. Stanton need to stick around?
I think that's it for the night, right? So, cause freehold welding's been put off, so. The answer. He's excused.
You're excused, Mr. Stanton.
Thank you very much, guys. Have a great night. Take care of the kids. All right. Have a good one, guys. Good night.
Okay, I'm going to read case number BA twenty-one dash seventeen Gabrielli Howell LLC. Use variance and preliminary and final major site plan. Description, application of Gabrielli. Howell Realty LLC as applicant and Howell Development LLC as owners. Seeking use variance and preliminary and final major. Site plan approval to construct a two-story thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty square foot. Building for truck sales, leasing and service with associated parking, loading and fueling. The site will be accessed via a thirty-six foot. Wide two-way driveway from highway nine north, which provides internal access to the site. Additional improvements include various drive aisles, visitor inventory and employee parking. A fuel tank, fueling tank station, loading zone. One retaining wall and one store where met, water management basin. On premises known as block one forty-four, lot one zero nine and one one three dot zero one. Twelve oh seven dash twelve oh nine US Highway nine north. Expiration date, May fourteen, twenty twenty-two. Eligible voters, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Orosko, Seiya and Manson.
And Gonzalez, right?
Mr. Gonzalez, have you certified?
Yes.
And Gonzalez, thank you, sir. Okay, who do we have? Mr. Fiala and Ms. Gonchar.
Yes. Um, and we also need Julia Algejo, our first witness. We were in the middle of her. Uh, testimony, I think, when we broke at the hearing on February twenty-eighth.
Eileen.
Merrill, we only have six, just so you know.
Yeah, I just wanted to go through. I sort of lost count on it. Um. But, uh, yes, I had been advised that that might be the circumstance this evening.
Evening.
Um.
Merrill, I would recommend that we hear the testimony and push the vote if, if you feel desire to do so.
Yes.
And, and we'll get, you know, members to catch up as necessary.
Um, and if I can also ask, we also should have a court reporter if the, um, if. Um, Eileen, the other Eileen, I'm sorry. I think it's great. I don't have to learn another name. Um.
I see her at me, I see her in the audience.
Right. If we could just have her admitted, because if she can't hear something and needs to speak up to ask someone to repeat it. Uh, we usually ask that she be allowed to be a, um, yeah, a panelist so that the board can hear her if she has such a problem.
And Merrill, isn't Michelle Breihoff a witness for you too?
Yeah, I didn't know if you admit all at the same time. We also have. Paul Avento, who was our, um, representative of the applicant who testified last time. I do know sometimes questions had popped up during other testimony. Um, so you might want to admit him. Um, we have Kirk, uh, who's our architect. I'll get you all of the names, Dwayne Dancey and Kirk Mitchell, who are our two architects. Um, Michelle, as you indicated, our traffic consultant.
Ray Walker is in the audience too, in the.
Yeah. We, we are not, um, Ray is our environmental consultant. We do not propose to present him for direct. We have him for any questions or issues that may come up. But certainly I didn't know if you had a limit to how many people you would can, can, uh, enter as panelists, so.
We don't.
Okay, so, Mr. Bear. Has everyone that's let in on this application been previously sworn to testimony?
I don't.
Dan Block.
Think so, right?
Stan here.
He's here with his hand up.
The.
Oh, he's in.
I'm just checking. I don't.
I believe, like, right? Cause I think you had the engineer and the planner testify the last time.
We actually had.
They were sworn.
Just the, uh, Mr. Avento, who is a representative of the applicant. And Julia, uh, Algejo, our engineer, uh, both of them were sworn because they did offer testimony last time. I'm trying to look and see if anybody, if we had anybody else sworn at the time. Um. Let's see, Michelle had been, uh, Ray Walker, Julia. Um, but I just, I don't recall Dwayne Dancey and Kirk. We represent, they were let in. I just don't recall if they were sworn, but since they're all here now.
It ended at Julia. I think she was the.
Oh, I think, I saw. Sworn in. Julia, Dan and Michelle are the ones that I have on my notes.
That was sworn.
Dan and Kirk too.
Okay, um. Yeah, I'm just trying to skim through. I did want to say that we did provide a copy of the transcript of the February twenty-eighth hearing. To Eileen today, so that I don't know if she had a chance. I know she had to leave earl, uh, Eileen Rubano. I know she had to leave early. But that is available, um, if that makes it easier for the board members. And we will be happy to provide a copy of tonight's transcript. Um, uh, assuming that we carry it for any purpose, including the vote. So that any members who are not here will have the opportunity to read it rather than having to watch the video. Um, so we're, we're happy to provide that. Um. But again, um, I just want to make sure that, um. That the witnesses, uh, certainly Julia was sworn in, Mr. Avento. And maybe I can ask my witnesses if they remember whether they were sworn last time, but, um.
So I would like for Mr. Bear to, you know, swear everyone in at one time here, so that.
So we. Yeah.
We cover.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, can all the applicants, professionals raise your right hand? And do you swear that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Bear. So you're going to get everyone's name on the record here.
Um, if we can, do you want us to go through and provide, have each one of them provide their name? Andy or do you want?
Yes, that would be if everyone individually could just, uh, say their name and spell their last, that would be great.
Okay. You want to start with, uh, Julie, it was, we, I know you were already sworn, Kirk?
Yes, Kirk Mitchell. Mitchell is M I T C H E L L.
Okay.
Uh, Dwayne?
Um, I can go next. My name is Dwayne Dancey. Last name is D A N.
Um, I can go next. My name is Dwayne Dancey. Last name is D A N C Y.
Thank you. Dan?
Daniel Block, B L O C H.
Michelle?
Michelle Breyhoff, B R I E H O F, as in Frank.
Michelle, you raised your right hand?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and I don't know if Ray was let in, but, um, if Ray can hear, if, if he is, um, Ray.
His video wasn't on, but, uh, Ray?
Yes, uh, Ray Walker, R A Y W A L K E R.
And you raised your right hand?
Yes.
Very good.
Okay, I think we covered everybody.
All right.
Right, proceed.
We're good. Mr. Bear, you're good?
I'm good. I think we're ready to go.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Um, if we may, um, as I, I went back and looked at the transcript, and I believe where we had, um, ended last time, we had offered to have Julia start discussing the buffers. We were cautioned by Jennifer that that was not going to be, and I quote, "a five-minute discussion." So I think that is when the board determined it would be a good time to break. It was already ten thirty. So, um, if we can start, uh, back where we ended, unless, uh, in the interim, if the board has any additional question, it has, wants to deal with anything before we move on to that. Um, and I would note, just, we'll get to these. We did receive an updated list of transcripts, of transcripts of exhibits. And as we get to the, um, any specific ones that have been submitted more recently, although, um, last week, in advance of this hearing, we will have our witnesses, um, identify those and discuss them. We would also note that, uh, correspondence was submitted, um, to the board, uh, addressed to Eileen, um, from Colliers. I'll let, uh, Julia discuss that, but there should be a letter dated March fifteen, uh, twenty twenty-two, which does deal with one of the buffers. So, um, I'm guessing Julia will refer to it, but I just want the, uh, want that noted. And that is marked on Eileen's updated list as, um, A twenty-eight, I believe. So. Julia, if we can pick up, uh, where we left off, uh, in your, I'm sorry.
No, and, and Julia's credentials are already on the record, correct?
She's been qualified, Mr. Chairman, as a professional planner at the, at the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bear.
Actually, um, I'm sorry, but as a professional engineer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay. You just added to her credentials, but.
A lot of P E's have P P's also, you know, but I think, I apologize.
That, that's quite, quite all right. Um, all right, so, um, if we can, uh, where we were at the last, uh, hearing, we were just going to start a discussion with regard to the buffers. Uh, and one of the reasons for that is because, in fact, there, we have sought, um, uh, variances, I believe they're characterized, uh, with regard to a number of circumstances on site. So Julia, if you can address the, uh, buffers and those from which we are seeking, um, relief, and also advise us about the modification to the relief that we had sought.
Yes, certainly. Um, good evening, everyone. I would like to bring up an exhibit. And. Give me a moment. Here we go. Okay, so what you see here, it's the existing condition exhibit, and actually, um, used this exhibit at the last hearing, but we submitted on, on or about, um, March sixteen with a letter discussing the stream quarter and stream quarter buffer, so it's revised, um. So this is Exhibit A thirty-two, and it's the existing condition exhibit last revised, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And, um, the difference between this, the revision that was made is we looked further into the definitions of the stream quarter and the stream quarter buffer, and, um, made a revision that I'll describe to you. So within the ordinance for the stream and stream channel, there's certain qualifiers, this is within Haveltown ordinance, certain qualifiers that, um, denote streams and, um, stream channels and how you apply Section one eighty-eight thirty-four, uh, repair and buffer and stream quarter preservation to these features. So what we determined that the Bannon Meadow Brook, and if you could, if everyone could see my pointer, the Bannon Meadow Brook, um, which is located here, um, you know, absolutely qualifies as a stream and would have the hundred-foot stream quarter and hundred-foot stream quarter buffer. There is a secondary feature that I described at the last hearing, um, a tributary to the Bannon Meadow Brook. And this stream is, it's actually an ephemeral stream, um, and it is, it receives the runoff from the detention basin on the, um, the, uh, New Jersey Transit property. So there's a pipe and a headwall, um, and then this intermittent channel, um, discharges to the Bannon Meadow Brook. Uh, the drainage area to this outflow is less than fifty acres. Um, it does not appear on the US GS Quadrant Triangle maps or the, um, soil surveys and any of, any of the other qualifiers that, um, exist within the ordinance to meet the definition to have a stream quarter buffer. However, in speaking with your professionals, uh, we understand that the township, townships ordinance, um, the, the idea was to model after DEP regulations, and in accordance with the DEP riparian zone uh, requirements, you would truncate at the, at the headwall, to create your riparian zone, or in this case, the stream quarter and stream quarter buffers. So that's what we've depicted on this exhibit. Um, it's a modification from the last submission, but as you can see, uh, truncating at the headwall, which is consistent with DEP regulations, the stream quarter and the stream quarter buffer do not fall on the subject property. They actually fall on the adjacent property. So we wanted to formally, um, address that. Uh, in the letter, it was submitted on or about March sixteenth, and, um, with these exhibits. Um, so now moving along, there are some, um, buffers that do exist on the property, and you'll see them outlined in red. There's this fifty-foot farmland buffer, and then there's also, um, a fifty-foot residential buffer along the easterly property line, the fifty-foot farmland buffer along the northerly property line, and then a fifty-foot residential buffer associated with a residential property that's located on the other side of, um, Highway nine. So I'd like to just briefly describe the existing buffers and what's inside of them, and then I'm gonna switch over to the proposed condition. So within this fifty-foot farmland buffer, um, you can see there's, um, there's a structure, and there's pavement, and there's, um, open areas that are presently, when I say open, they're, they're non-vegetated areas that are presently being used as part of the, uh, facility's operations. Um, and there's pavement along in the front of the, um, closer to Route nine. And then along the, in the, and this, um, area, by the way, is adjacent to, as you can see, the, um, floodplains associated with the environmental features I just described. So it's, it's a buffer adjacent to floodplain, basically. Um, and then, um, to the new, to the east, that is, there's the residential buffer, which, again, is open, it, for the bulk of it is opened, um, and the, um, property owners are using this property as part of their operations. There's trailers and, and paving. And then the residential buffer in the front, there's, um, structures and pavement. Um, you know, and other, um, pertinent features associated with the existing development. Okay, so now, um, I'd like to move to another exhibit that we had submitted, which is amended. So this, this exhibit, um, the board saw at the last hearing, this is our proposal. Changes that are made to this, again, deal with the stream quarter buffer and stream quarter that, um, are now depicted on the adjoining property. So you could see in the.
Excuse me, Julia, I think for reference, this is, um, aerial imagery of the site. Exhibit A thirty-three dated two twenty-eight twenty-two and last revised three fifteen twenty-two, is that accurate?
Yes, thank, thank you for that, yes.
Okay.
And it's, it's a color rendering of our, um, landscaping plan. So starting along the northerly property line, the, the fifty-foot farmland buffer, um, as you can see, we're proposing mostly vegetation, um, and some parking in that area. So within that, um, within the farmland buffer, um, under existing condition, the disturbed area was twenty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight square feet. And the proposed condition, the farmland buffer, um, will contain three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four square feet of impervious surfaces. So there'll be a net reduction of about, um, half an acre of disturbance, and the remaining area would be revegetated and, and naturalized. Um, as far as the residential buffers go, um, along the front of the property, where it was almost completely developed, you'll see that there's, um, landscaping proposed and some parking associated with the new development. And then along the rear of the property, adjacent to the New Jersey Transit property, um, you'll see that we're proposing pavement and then landscaping across the property line, and then we're supplementing the landscaping um, in the corners of both sides of the parking. And for the, um, residential buffer, buffers, we are under existing condition. The existing disturbance is about twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy square feet. And under the proposed condition, uh, approximately fourteen thousand, five hundred square feet. So there'd be a net reduction of, um, from impervious to pervious areas, approximately quarter of an acre. So, um, you know, it, it's largely improved under the proposed condition.
Okay, and let me just ask the, um, so that I understand, as we're looking at the photo and given my challenge with direction, to the left, as we look at the picture, that is the, um, that is the farmland?
Yes.
Buffer, and is that property currently used as active farming, to your knowledge?
Um, no, it, it is under, not, not adjacent to the farmland buffer, it is not. Um, the.
Okay.
Property, my understanding, is, um, farmland assessed.
Correct. And was that good?
I, I just want to add, though, that, um, although the property is farmland assessed, um, in addition, this prop, portion of the property adjacent to our, um, subject property is in the HD one zone, the same as our site. The same as our site.
And did, did someone mention, was that property subject to an application? I think they were ahead of us and carried at the last meeting.
That, that is my understanding that, um, the property is the subject of a solar application.
Okay, and then moving around the building, um, if I'm standing on Route nine, um, looking straight ahead behind our property, that buffer, um, is the, the required buffer at the rear of the property is as a result of the, um, zoning on the property? Or i- it, is that a residential, or is that one of the farmland assessed? Uh, the, uh, the farmland buffer requirements?
Right, that a residential buffer is due to the, um, property, to the New Jersey Transit property being in the A R E two zone, the agricultural rural estate zone. So of the property line, the coincident property line is the zone boundary.
Okay, um, and that, all of that property, though, is in ownership, to your knowledge, of New Jersey Transit and is being operated as a bus depot?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, um, and then, um, I know we didn't identify it, is the, the property between the double, is that a boulevard entrance to the New Jersey Transit site to the right as we look at the property? Um, which would be the south, is that also zoned residential on that side?
No, that is zoned HD one.
Okay, so there's no buffer there. And then lastly, I think you spoke to this last time. If we're, if we are, um, looking from the site out towards Route nine, the reason that there is a requirement for a residential buffer along the frontage of our property in the HD one on Route nine is because, I believe you testified, there is a residence somewhere across Route nine, is that accurate?
Yes, I, I did provide testimony, and I provided an exhibit showing the location of the house. I think it's about four hundred feet back from the Route nine right-of-way on the other side of the road, which would make it about over five hundred feet away from this property line.
Okay, all right.
And I could bring up that other exhibit if you'd like me to.
No, thank you. I, I mean, if you want me to ju- to jump in, Mr. Chair, I probably can summarize this for you. I'm not trying to, Ms. Gonchar, I'm trying to help here. So if you want me to, I can. If you don't, that's fine, but I can probably cut down the testimony and for a significant amount, if you'd like, but it's up to you.
Jen?
Any, anything that shortens it is a good thing.
So I, I, what I'm, what I was gonna say is, so technically, the ordinance requires the buffer for every residentially zoned property or any residential use. And I think what Ms. Algejo has presented to us is, yes, there is a house across Route nine, which is like hundreds of feet away. The right-of-way is over, like, a hundred feet, plus the house is set back, and it's in the HD one zone. And they have the landscape strip, which is an improvement over what's there currently. So I take no exception to the testimony that she's provided with respect to that distance. In addition, the farmland buffer, which is immediately to the north, technically, it's a Q farm. Yes, there's absolutely an application that is before us currently for a solar farm. However, it's also significantly environmentally constrained. So the likelihood that even in the event that that application for the solar doesn't move forward, which is still pending before us, um, there is no activity that is gonna take place along that northern property line. So, you know, the goal of these buffers is to protect the farm, quite honestly. And there is no farming activity. I would wholly heartedly agree with Ms. Algejo's testimony with respect to the, the fact that it's, it's, yes, it's a Q farm, but it's not actively farmed, and it's environmentally constrained. And if you look to the east, yes, the, the, the parking ride is in, or what, it's the bus, it's the bus depot, correct, Merrill?
I think that's correct, yes.
The bus depot, so that's in, technically, an A R E zone as well. And the ordinance requires, if it's a residentially zoned property, however, the likelihood that New Jersey Transit's gonna, you know, release that property is unlikely. At the end of the day, this application, and I don't mean to steal your thunder, Merrill, but like, is it.
Hey, steal away.
Okay, is it drastic improvement over what's on the property currently? And as you all know, as board members, I am a staunch advocate of the, of maintaining these buffers. I think it's one of the things that the boards here in town are known for, but in this particular instance, what is being proposed is a drastic improvement over what is currently there. They are providing landscaping along the northern property line. They are providing landscaping along Route nine. They are providing landscaping along the northern property line. They are providing landscaping along Route nine. The buffers that are being, would be technically required. I think in this particular instance, the benefits of this development outweigh the absolute strict adherence to those ordinances. So that being said, I don't know if there's any more information, Merrill, that you need to provide. But I would submit to the board that what they are providing, they are providing landscaping, they are providing some kind of adjacent buffering, depending on whatever is going to go to the north. The property across Route nine, yes, technically it's a house, but they are providing some buffering, which is way better than what's there now. So I would submit to the board that you seriously consider approving that relief because I think what they're proposing is a drastic improvement of this property over what's there currently. That's my professional opinion.
Thank you. And with the, when you're, when you're ahead, be quiet. I will follow that. I will follow that. The only question I wanted to ask is in addition to the variances identified in the review letters, probably both the planner and the engineer and Jennifer's letter, there was also a citation to section one eighty-eight dash one oh six I three, which it's sort of the other side of the buffer requirement. The relief is because we are providing, proposing that some of the parking be in the area that would otherwise be allocated to the buffer. So I would simply just ask Julia, am I correct that that's sort of the flip side, what's proposed in some of the buffers from which we're seeking relief is some of the parking? And that's what is the basis of that waiver from section one eighty-eight dash one oh six capital I three?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, and so therefore, is, would it be your testimony that 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 is what we're proposing in that area that would otherwise be buffer is just the parking that you've identified and can be identified along the a portion of the north, along the, I guess, east? And I, and I'm guessing along the westerly side as well, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so when you gave us the testimony about the reduction in the impervious that were in those buffers, that reduction was even taking into account that some of this parking would be within those buffers. We still had that dramatic reduction, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Alright, the, that's really, Julia, unless you have something in your, your notes that I have not covered, I think that we have addressed the your direct testimony.
Ms. Gonchar?
Yeah.
I just want to ask, can she just, just touch on that water meter vault in the front? Is that at grade?
Yes, it is. It's at grade, New Jersey American Water Vault.
Alright, alright. I just want to make sure it wasn't one of those big, you know, boxes that they've been using.
No, it's not sticking up out of the ground will be at grade.
Okay.
Okay. Um.
So are we finished with Ms. Julia?
The only question I have, and I don't recall from the previous, the hearings that I watched before this board, to the extent that we, that there are any items in either the engineering or planning review letters, I don't know if you want to go through or have your consultants, if there are any items from those letters that they want to ask of this witness or if you do that later.
I would like that now. Charlie?
So yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to add to clarify too. So to add to what Ms. Aljo said regarding the the stream corridor and stuff like that off, off the north side of the property on the exhibit shown. So our stream quarter buffer, our stream quarter ordinance refers to like the soil survey map, USGS quadrangle map, other couple of references. And this tributary that they have shown, which would trigger, you know, the buffer typically going on to the property isn't on any of those maps. The applicant has taken a conservative approach and still depicted it with our township's stream corridor and stream quarter buffer ordinance. But what they've done was they've eliminated the necessity for a variance from the stream quarter, stream quarter buffer ordinance. As Ms. Aljo alluded, our ordinance, you know, it's our interpretation that it's meant to model the DEP's repairing buffer regulations for flood hazard area, which the applicant's going to be required to get as a condition of any approval. And what they do is when there's a pipe at the start of a stream, the repairing buffers, which would typically go radially, you know, from the end of that stream gets cut off perpendicular to the head wall. So, so what they're showing on the plan here is the typical stream quarter buffer ordinance cut off, you know, perpendicular along the property line. So, so my review letter still had them needing a variance. My last review letter dated December twenty-third. So if I had issued a new letter, we would have struck that from my report as needing a merit requirement. As far as engineering, really a question that I had was regarding landscaping, you know, obviously they put the testimony regarding, you know, why the buffer is not applicable in this use. There is a green area on like the northern, or I guess it's northeasterly portion of this exhibit, where there's like grass between existing vegetation, you know, I'll defer to Shari whether they're deficient on the parking, not the parking, the tree replacement calculation. They are.
I think they said last time that they would add in there, is that correct?
Alright.
Yeah, I think Julia, if I'm not mistaken, I think the number that we came up with was around six additional trees that you indicated could be added in, which reduced, I believe, the deficiency. I want to say it was forty-four, Shari, and now we're down to thirty-eight. Based upon the testimony that Julia provided last time, I think that was the change in the number. Julia, do you have that in your?
Yes.
Notes?
I agree with what you just said.
Okay, so the deficiency then would be reduced, I think, six trees unless unless there's an ability to put more in, but I thought that's what, that was the number that we had come up with.
So, and then just the last thing, Mr. Chair, with the stormwater management, I think obviously if anyone were to look back at historic areas of the site, you can see over time, there's been a lot of impervious coverage, parking of vehicles throughout the site. You know, without any stormwater management measures, because they were not required, because a lot of it probably predated stormwater management rules. So with this application, the applicant with the parking area is going to have curbing, going to have drainage, going to capture all this runoff that's generated from the site into a stormwater management basin before it gets discharged, you know, to the stream that's to the north of the property. I think it's a Panamana Brook. So I think that's an improvement. Right now you have a property that is probably half paved, mix of gravel, mix of maybe millings, you know, who knows what the prior owner has had on the property. So now you're getting curb with pavement that's all captured into a stormwater management basin with an infiltration basin, which I think from a stormwater perspective and environmental perspective is an improvement on the property. I just asked Ms. Aljo, my last letter, December twenty-third, the site grading and drainage as a discussion, you've had a chance to review those and you're confident you can address any, you know, outstanding items as a condition of any approval?
Yes. I agree.
That's all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Charlie, my question to you is then, on the farmland buffer to the north, the fifty-foot setback, where we have some parking that appears to be depicted within that buffer to the northern side of the plantings, right there, you're telling me there's a pipe that's draining into the basin?
Yeah, so basically, in this exhibit on the top of the page is is the detention basin for the Powell Township Benji Transit Bus Depot. And their outfall actually, it comes, it's, you can't see it at the top of the exhibit, but like where the top point of the lot line is, there are yellow lines, it comes up to the left and then literally runs parallel to the property line down to, yeah. Yeah, so runs parallel down and then turns left and daylight's right out to to that, that stream right there. So there's a pipe with a head wall and that's how DEP for flood hazard restrictions, they cut off any repairing zone at the start of a stream where it comes from a covert or a head wall at the start of the stream. So you know, and that all predates this site, this application. I think the bus depot was put in late nineties, early two thousands. So we've seen this on another recent application with a similar occasion. It hasn't come up in many applications before, because most times it's a stream running along the side of a property or parallel to a property, you know. This is a little bit of an atypical instance where it's, you know, I think, I think the applicant's environmental professional provided some information, whether questioning whether or not it's actually, you know, a stream, whether it's actually ephemeral, maybe it was a drainage ditch that was created as a result of that head wall being installed by the depot, you know, in the late nineties. Long story short, they've, they've treated it, you know, conservatively, applied our stream quarter, our stream quarter buffer ordinance, and they're applying the flood hazard rules, you know, in a similar manner to, or applying the truncation of the repairing zone in a similar manner to our stream quarter ordinance. So I don't take exception to it. And then just to beat down the point, that farmland buffer, like we said, probably seventy-five, eighty percent of that is adjacent to that environmentally restricted area where it's not just flood hazard area, there's wetlands and other things. So the likelihood that anyone's ever farming that at any point in the future is highly unlikely. And if they do, you know, they're going to be in trouble. So.
Thank you, Charlie. Before we move on, I was gonna
I just have a couple of questions. I just want to, Julia, you may have touched on this the last time, but I just want to make sure for the record, because my notes are unclear. Um, I know that initially the application requested a waiver for sidewalk, correct? But you guys are going to provide the sidewalk?
I think that we were encouraged to believe that the waiver would not be granted.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. So, I mean, I could tell you that the lot, the lot immediately to the south of you has agreed to put sidewalk and we're looking to kind of extend the sidewalk network. So we would look for that. So that's just one of the things that I wanted to just make sure we were clear on. And then Julie, can you provide me with a detail for the retaining wall located north of the loading area? I just don't have that in my file.
Okay, so the retaining wall is associated with the building and the loading area and it's on the south side of the building.
Yeah, I see the detail. That's all I need.
Okay, right now we're on our
No, 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 just provide me with the detail. Should the application be approved? Can you provide me with the
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
And then the last thing is the masonry trash enclosure, yes?
We, may I just address that because I may be more up to date on that? We, we do want to put in our testimony about where it's currently located. We do, we did hear the board and we do have another alternative. I think we did submit a plan showing that in advance of the hearing also. We'd like to walk through that before we give you an answer on that.
Okay.
Because we think we found a way that works for the operational aspect of it and also addresses, we hope the board's concern, but we're open to still addressing that.
So is that Julia or is that someone else?
No, that's actually going to be dealt with by the architect next.
Okay, okay.
If that's okay, yeah.
I'll hold off on it then.
We know it's not, we know it's not resolved.
I just wanted to make sure as I'm checking things off, that's all.
Okay, so Jen?
I'm good.
You're good? Alright, Ms. Gonchar, I'd like to ask the board members if any of them have any questions. The engineer? Mr. Martin?
I think some good points were brought up by our planner and I do concur. I think the sidewalk should go in because it is also near a bus depot, which, you know, could, you know, there will be traffic. So other than that, everything else I concur with.
Roger, Mr. Gonzalez?
No question. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Roscoe.
Yep.
Mr. Hughes?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just one quick question and just for clarification for me. I know they had mentioned to, to the north, there was an HD one. I know we have this farmland buffer and the stream and all. Where is the HD one, like right on Route nine? Or am I misinterpreting?
So the buffer requirement is residential use or zone or farmland. So that property that's technically zone HD one along Route nine there is a farm assessed property. That's what's coming into play. So it's, it's kind of a double edged sword, right? But it is farm assessed. We do have a pending application, which is before us, that NJ solar application for that exact property. But I think Charlie is actually right, a hundred percent right. There are significant environmental issues on that property immediately adjacent to this that would preclude any development up against them anyway.
I just, I heard HD one and farm, I got confused.
Yeah, it's unusual.
Okay, that's great clarification. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cantor?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Great, did we get everybody? Looks like we have. Ms. Gonchar, back to you.
Thank you. We'd like to call Dwayne Dorf, Dancy and Kirk Mitchell, who are our architects and qualify them. If we may, since they've both been sworn now, I'd like to start with Dwayne. If you can please remind the board your name with who you're, with whom you're associated and advise them of any licenses that you hold in the state of New Jersey, please, or registrations.
Good evening, everybody. I hope you can hear me. My name is Dwayne Dancy. I'm an architect, a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, have approximately twenty years' experience. Licensed in a few states, New Jersey, New York, Connecticut, Massachusetts, DC, Louisiana, a couple more.
What's called did you attend, sir?
I went to Columbia University and I received a master's in advanced architectural design and a bachelor of architecture from Howard University.
We accept your credential, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we can also qualify, oh, the name of the company, I'm sorry, the one thing we didn't put in.
AKT, sorry.
Thank you. Alright, and Kirk, if you could please provide the same information and perhaps just tell us what school you graduated from and your work experience and with whom you're associated.
Short thing, good evening, everyone. My name's Kirk Mitchell. I'm affiliated with AKT Designs and I've been practicing for twenty-plus years. I have a bachelor's of architecture from Howard University and I have a master's of science of architecture at Carnegie Mellon University.
We accept your credential, sir. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Alright, and since both of you worked on this together and I don't know if I think Kirk is going to start off. If you could please, first of all, tell me if there's an exhibit that you want to bring up to start. And then if you can begin by walking us through what's proposed for the building on site from an architectural perspective, having heard Julia's testimony with regard to the site layout and design.
Short thing, I'd like to bring up the plans, the architectural plans, which is exhibit A ten.
Okay.
And
Now those, am I correct, those were dated originally five twenty-five, twenty-one and they show a most recent revision, ten twenty-nine, twenty-one?
The most recent revision, we sent in the latest exhibit last week is three twenty-three, twenty-two.
Right, that was a single sheet that we'll get, but the, what you're referring to now is that what was submitted as an exhibit or are these the plans that were originally submitted?
Yeah, these were, these were resubmitted as an exhibit as we made a couple of changes, one being the loading dock that we previously discussed.
Okay, so then you referred to this as A ten with this incorporates. Let me just find the exhibit number. Is this a revised architectural, this was dated five twenty-five, twenty-one, three twenty-three, twenty-two revision?
Yes.
Okay, so that's A thirty on the exhibit list.
Alright, you're right, like Merrill, you're right. I have a revision date of October twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-one as well.
Okay. Okay.
Addressed the concerns in my letter, just so you, I would make sure you put that on the record as well.
Absolutely, so we have two exhibits then on Eileen's list, A-ten, which was initially. Um, referenced, and those were the plans that were referenced, I think, in the review letters. And then more recently to address some of the comments. Um, we have also added an exhibit as one of the alternatives we mentioned to you, and I'll let Kirk tell you. Whatever, what other changes are on there that will obviously be carried through the full set if the, um. If the board grants approval and is satisfied with the change that we propose. So with that, Kirk, can you start, uh, walking us through and describing, um, the floor plans, the elevations and, um. Uh, generally, the architectural design, what the board will see, what the public will see if this project is approved.
Yeah, short thing. Um, so I'm gonna start off with walking the board through the proposed ground floor plan, which is on your screen now. And, um, the approximate north arrow is down. So we have east to our left, west to our right, and south at top. Uh, the building is aesthetically separated into two sections, the two-story portion of the building that faces Route nine and Route nine would be here to our west. Um, houses, the showroom, uh, sales, office spaces. And part storage, part sales, service write-up, and other supporting spaces. Um, and the, uh, the rear of the building, which is a one-story double-height space. Is solely exclusive of our service bays, which we have twelve service bays, six on each side, and, um, a two-car wash bay. On the north area of our site, we also have a drive-through canopy. Um, which extends out to our above-ground fuel tank, which we discussed in our previous hearing, and I'll go into more detail later. And then at the south end of our site is our loading and receiving area, and this is where our depressed. Loading dock ramp is located for our receiving, uh, deliverables. And also, um, our trash container, and I'll go into more detail with that shortly. Uh, this is the second floor, and the second floor is just for the, the front portion of the building, the two-story space. And up here, we have more part storage, some more office spaces to the west side of the building. Then we have technicians, locker rooms, and bathrooms, as well as a couple of conference rooms on this side of the building. So this two-story space is only approximately half the size of the building and towards the front, towards, um, Route nine. Uh, this is just a roof plan, what I like to do is go through the elevations. Um, so the building, uh, is. Uh, exterior facade includes a dark split-face brick base course here. That wraps the entire building, and above the brick face course is a light gray, and I'll bring up the. The rendering, and this is the exhibit A twenty-five, so three-D exterior rendering. Um, it's just an artistic rendering showing what the building would look like. Um, so you have your split dark-faced brick at the bottom, and at the top, we have a scored smooth light gray stucco finish. That's used for the entire two-story portion of the building. Um, within that stucco portion of the facade are punched window openings. With light gray aluminum casement windows to match the color of the stucco. On the northeast corner of the building is operable glass, I'm sorry, that'd be northwest, would be, um. The operable glass entryway that's here to highlight the showroom and for trucks to enter and exit the showroom floor, as there'll be. Large trucks brought in through and out here. Uh, being that our building is over fifty linear feet in length, the front portion of the building incorporates wall projections and recesses. Of a minimum of three feet in depth and extend over ten percent of the facades. So, if I go back to plan. Um, you'll notice that the. The building, um, in no area is longer than, uh, fifty linear feet. That it doesn't have at least a three-foot in-depth, um, recess or projection going around the perimeter of the building. And you can see that also here in the exterior rendering. Um, being that our roof, the building's roof is long, longer than seventy-five feet in length, the front portion of the building also incorporates. Uh, roofline offsets in order to provide architectural interest. Um, and relieve any negative visual effect of a single long roof. Those roofline offsets are two-foot increments, um, and they coincide with the facade wall projection and recesses. Uh, the front portion of the building also incorporates an articulated cornice line, as you see here, the dark gray metal cap. Along the roofline, which also complies with the design standards. Uh, the rear portion of the building, which is back here in the rendering, and I'll bring it up, um, in elevation. Alright, so this is the rear portion of the building, on the top is the proposed left side of the north elevation, and. Here is the south elevation, which on your right-hand side. Um, and the rear portion houses the service and wash bays exclusively, so in order to allow a free span space with no columns. Uh, we intend to use proprietary building structure, often known as a Butler Building in this case. And the Butler Building is a pre-engineered metal building. In order to service portion of the building, into the rest of the building, we wrap the same dark. Split-face brick around to try to continue the same language from the front of the building to the back of the building as best possible. Uh, the upper portion of the service center would be light gray, uh, metal paneling. And that's a part of the pre-engineered building, and this is the reason why it does not have same, uh, projections and recesses as the front of the building does. However, due to the pre-engineer fact, uh, of the building, it pretty much be impossible to include those projections, a roof line offsets. However, this portion of the building is in the rear, um, it's pretty much. Uh, it's pretty much concealed from Route nine and hidden from the for- front portion of the building. On the. I, I don't have it here in, um. Yeah, it's on the site plans that the civil engineer showed before, but I wanted to talk quickly through the, um, the signage. Uh, the signage on the building itself. Back to the elevations. Okay. So in order to direct customers to the respective areas of the building, we have included. Six exterior signs that will be installed on the exterior facade of the building. Uh, we were previously showing nine signs, however, we reduced the number to six to try to comply with zoning ordinance. Um, due to our franchise agreement with Kenworth, six signs, uh, is the minimum number of signs that we can. Display respective to the function of the building. Uh, for example, on the drive-through, here's a drive-through canopy here, you'll see that there's a sign, um, that says service, zoom in a little bit. It's one on the front and one on the back, since it's a two-way drive aisle. And, um, obviously, that's placed there to sh- show where, um, drivers are to be bringing their car in for service. The largest exterior sign on the building reads rental and leasing. And that is on the north side elevation, um, the back portion of the building with the service bays are. Um, and that's basically to inform customers of the service the facility provides. The three other signs are franchise branding signs that read Gabrielli. Uh, you can see that here in our rendering. Uh, Gabrielli, and, and this is split actually into two signs, so even though it looks like one sign, we counted G as one sign. And then Gabrielli is the other, and then here is the Kenworth brand sign. Um, and that's so the customers are aware of, uh, that they're at their intended location. The other signs, we have two more, uh, exterior signs that are not included on the facade of the building. And that is one pylon sign that sits close to Route nine, which is approximately eighty square feet. And the signage coverage, and it's, uh, thirty-eight feet, two inches at the highest from grade. And that is for, um, traffic along Route nine to, uh, alert. Vehicles where the entrance to our facility is, and the reason of its height is to be seen, especially at. Um, high speeds along, uh, US Highway nine.
Are those signs lighted?
Uh, the, the pylon is not, the pylon is non-illuminated, and it's steel frame and silver, uh, with white and red. The monument sign that would sit in front of our facility, um, right near the handicap, uh, spaces in the northwest area. Is, um, internally illuminated. Um, and this monument signs approximately eighty-five square feet total, it sits on a matte blue base. Which is a hundred and twenty-two inches by forty-four inches. Or better, uh, three, it's three foot six tall and ten foot two wide. And the main portion of the sign that shows that reads entrance and the facility name Gabrielli. Is eight foot wide by six feet tall, and those are acrylic letters, uh, white, red, and blue, and satinized. I'm sorry, satin, ironed out silver.
Alright, Mr. Mitchell, one second, please. Jen? Does that sign meet our sign ordinance?
So, in our letter, there is a signage section, I'm just trying to get to it.
I think they need a variance for the number of signs, Mr. Saye, I think also the dimensions of the monument sign.
Yes.
And we have identified those.
Yes.
Six signs, six wall facades, one pylon sign, and one monument sign, so a variance is needed for that. And the monument sign should not be greater than twelve feet long by three feet high, or four by ten, in, excluding the base. Uh, the proposed monument sign does not meet the dimension, so yes, they do need some relief in signage.
Mr. Mitchell, can you just clarify for the board, so does that sign stay illuminated, uh, after hours, the monument sign, or does that turn off over, overnight when they're not in, in operation?
Um, I think I'd like to, uh, defer to Paul for that, but in my knowledge that it's turned out at night, but I, I would like to defer to Paul, the, um. Owner's representative.
And then the six wa- wall facade signs, are any of those internally illuminated or externally illuminated?
Uh, no, they're not proposed to be illuminated.
Okay, so it's just the monument sign out front would be the only one illuminated?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Saye, I think we should just get clarification on the, from the applicant on the. You know, it's not atypical, we've seen signs shut down, you know, an hour after business and don't turn on, you know. An hour before sundown or, or, uh, sun, yeah, sundown, I guess. Um, just so it's, you know, not illuminated at all hours of the night if it's not in operation, so I think we'll just get clarification from the applicant on that.
Yeah, I don't know, Paul was on with us, and I, I, he's still, Paul, is that something, since we're dealing with it now? Um, unless you wanna think about it, and we'll speak to you when we finish with this witness, but the request, I believe, is that the. Um, monument sign, which is the only lit sign, not remain lit. Uh, twenty-four hours a day, but rather, um, I think they're asking if that is shut down. Uh, at any point after the business is closed.
Typically, at our locations, we have the, um, we have the signs go off, um. Typically, if we're there, it's at ten o'clock at night, um, I think that's what we said the hours were gonna be.
Yeah.
Um, they would get shut down at ten o'clock in the evening. The monument sign, I'm not one hundred percent sure. I know, I know in some of the operations in New York, uh, some of the signs are on twenty-four, seven. But I don't think, uh, I don't think that's gonna be the case here. I know when we leave at about ten o'clock, most of the signs will come off, but I will check on the monument sign, that I'm not a hundred percent sure of.
Yeah, I think the testimony, if I recall, during your testimony with regard to the other lights. I believe that the indication was that the, uh, only the lights near or on the building would remain.
Correct.
For security, there'd be some lights left for security, and the rest of the lights at the perimeter and in the, uh, lot would, would go off, uh. Either at ten or shortly after the employees left. But, alright, why don't we think about this while, uh, and then we'll come back to it, so the only question is. Um, whether the monument sign would also shut down at some point, um, after the business closed.
Well, okay, in the lighting fit within the ordinance that we have as written, so that's, that's the question, alright?
Um, okay, the lighting.
Of the monument sign, you know, we go back many years, and we're, we have. Held the line on lighting up Route nine with signs around the clock, right? We've tried to limit. You know, the, the bleed over, the nighttime driving with lights flashing and stuff like that. Right, um, so, so our ordinance were written. With the, those things in mind, Jen?
So, you know, basically, the, they do need a waiver for the light intensity on the site for. Um, the average foot candles, et cetera, but that's based on the site lighting, that's not really dependent upon the. Monument sign lighting. I mean, I don't necessarily take exception to them keeping that sign lit until. I think, if I'm looking back on the testimony, um, the hour. Was, was ten o'clock, so. Right, so I don't have a problem if they commit to like turning that sign off an hour after closing, so like. Eleven o'clock, I, I don't take exception because it's on nine, and. You know, on the one side of them is the entrance to the bus depot, you know, on the other side of them is environmentally sensitive lands. And, you know, you are on a state highway, I don't take exception to it, I mean, I, I agree, we don't want it on all night. But if you're closing at ten, if there's a commitment to turning it off an hour after closing. You know, and, you know, based upon your testimony, people aren't just gonna show up there, right, so. Right, I mean, you hope not. Um, I, I think that that would be okay, if that's okay with you, Mr. Saye.
Your recommendation is, is well, well-received, thank you.
One hour after, and the thing is, is that he said he's closed on Sundays, and Saturday they close at five, correct?
Correct.
So if we get them to commit to turning that sign off an hour after closing. It'd be like eleven o'clock during the week on Route nine, and then six on Saturday, and no need to put it on on Sunday if they're closed.
Roger.
Fine with us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, alright, so, um. Do you have anything else in your direct that we have not covered, Kirk or Dwayne on, uh? Other than going, go ahead.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I was gonna go into the loading situation now.
And the other thing, I think the rooftop, I think we wanted to discuss, um, I think that was a comment in. Um, one or both of the letters, so. Go ahead.
The rooftop mechanical equipment?
Right.
Okay, uh, yeah, we, we mentioned that the, um, whatever rooftop mechanical equipment that would be. Located on the roof would be located towards the center of the roof. But we don't have precise dimensions at this time until we bring on a mechanical engineer.
Okay, but we, you would anticipate that given the location centered and the, um. Architectural detail at the roof, that it would not be visible, um, uh, to people, um. On the ground or, uh, going past the building, that would be your, the goal, and you believe that that will be met.
That's correct.
Okay, alright, um, tell me what you want to, um. Refer to, or are you gonna pull up something to, uh, to deal with the proposal?
Yes, so here is, uh, a side elevation of the depressed loading area, which we are proposing to put the trash container. Into, um, on the south side of the building, facing the bus depot. Um, I'll show everybody in plan, just so we have a reference. So here is our receiving area, and this is our depressed ramp, it's thirty-five feet, five inches by eighty feet long. And it slopes down five percent, so if we call the front of the ramp zero, the bottom would be four feet. And this would be for functional loading purposes, um, so that the base of the truck, the, the box trucks that back in. Can be easily loaded and unloaded. Um, one of the comments.
Four feet, you're talking negative four, right?
Negative four, sorry, negative four, yes.
Okay.
Um, yeah, let me, let me just go back to our, our section to better explain it. So this is the six-foot, um, wall, a masonry wall that encloses it, and this is, this dotted line would be. If we're seeing the ramp below grade. And what we are doing is we're proposing to put a trash container on the bay closest to the building. Um, that's approximately two feet by twenty-three feet long, this is a ten-yard trash container. And I know that one of the, a few of the previous comments before was that we didn't want, um, the trash visible from US nine. So one of the reasons why. So one of the reasons why we use this size container and the depressed curb was to conceal the trash container from US nine. Here is a full sightline elevation and this extends all the way from the closest lane of US Highway nine um, to the beginning of where that trash container is located. And it's approximately a hundred and ninety-five feet in distance from one another. So this line is from, um, an average height of somebody sitting in a vehicle. And I wanted to point out, and the reason why we're showing a, a semi-trailer here is because in the inventory parking in the front of our site, we are going to have, um, these semi-trailer trucks that are for sale on display. So this is display trucking, which, um, will pretty much always be, uh, filled with trucks so that you would not be able to see that far back into our site from US nine. However, um, with hearing the comments from the last time we presented, we came up with an, an alternative or an additional solution to try to conceal the trash container. And what we are proposing is to implement a eighteen-foot, um, by seven foot, six inches tall law automatic opaque metal swing gate. And this would, uh, stay closed until the truck is backing up or, uh, picking up a trash container or dropping one off. And then at the time that a truck is coming in, it would close right against the building where you see this nineteen, um, foot uh, linear space of the building, which it would kind of conceal into, um, and open up um, to be in the open position to conceal the trash container from the, uh, from US nine. While, uh, there's no loading or receiving in elevation that would look something like this. And these again are on the amended plans that we, uh, submitted last week. So it's seven foot six from grade where it is and then here is showing the bottom of the ramp curb. So we would more than, that the, the container itself is only two foot high. So we would more than conceal any trash container or any overage of trash in that container um, from US nine. And we're hoping that that pleases the board for a solution.
Jen?
Shockingly, I like it.
It's creative.
It is, and I like it. I, I mean, I think the argument about the topo is persuasive, but I think this is a great alternative to ensure that there's no creep and it doesn't creep out towards the road and it is a hundred percent blocked from view. So, you know, the, the display stuff that you were talking about is limited to only ten percent of the area. So who knows how much of that is actually going to be onsite at any given time. I think this solves that problem in a very creative way. So I, I like it.
Good. Board members, any questions?
I like it. I like it too.
Okay, so now that we've hopefully made you happy with that, we have one clarification um, that may not make you happy. So let me slide it in there and then, um, I think that I want to clarify with Kirk because, um,
Can't just go out on a high note, huh?
I, you know what, I, you would, you would think I would learn, would you not? Um, the, the question here is that, um, I think there may be some confusion that um, at least some of the wall signs, I'm not sure about the service, but I think perhaps some of the other wall signs were intended to be light, uh, to be, um, lit. And so I'm, I just don't want that, um, and I, maybe we can clarify. I don't know about the service one that's on the canopy that connects.
Can I, can I interrupt?
Uh, Mr., if, um, if I can just ask Andy, I think Paul, it was sworn previously. Uh, I don't know if he needs, he's the representative of Gabrielli. Um, I gather he could still remain. Thank you. Okay, Paul, can you clarify that? There may have been some misunderstanding and I want to get it while we can.
Right, so typically the, um, the building lights, the, uh, especially the service where the, uh, where the canopy is, that light will be on during the course of business up until ten o'clock in the evening. Um, and then, um, the other lights, Gabrielli, the sign on the, uh, side of the building right there. And the Kenworth, Kenworth sign will also be, um, with lights in, inside them. And they will also all be shut off at the end of the, uh, at the end of the evening.
Are those the only two? I was, I was, I know there's a sign at the back that has the leasing sign and I know there is one on the canopy. Are we correct that those are not, um, that the service one?
The service one will be on, service one will be on because.
Only during business.
Correct.
Okay, and is there a light on the back one where it's got the leasing and rental, the, the, that the rear? So there are in fact li- internal lighting and all of those go off at the time the business closes, not an hour after. Okay.
It could be an hour after, but it's just, you know, typically, I mean, we'll set the, uh, we have a, you know, typically have a clock and we'll set the clock at a certain time for the lights to go off. So we'll, if they want, if the town requires us to do it at ten o'clock, we'll do it at ten o'clock. They, you know, if they give us to eleven o'clock, we'll take eleven o'clock, but they will go off when the, uh, when the, we, we leave or an hour after we leave.
Okay, I just want, I apologize, Kirk. There may have been some.
Sorry, sorry for any confusion.
No, that's okay. So I want to make sure we.
I just think for clarif- for ease of the resolution and clarification, if there's a commitment to the lighted signs onsite, whether it be the, the monument sign or the signs on the building to be turned off an hour after end of business, I think that would make it easier for the town in the event they had to step in. And we are on Route nine, so I don't take exception to the request.
Thank you.
Terrific. Okay, so that first, yes, so that there, we don't have to worry about, uh, different hours. If that's the way it's written, I agree. I think that makes it easier for enforcement.
And then, and then Ms. Gonchar?
Yes.
You know, is the applicant willing to accept and register with the Howell Township under, for, for New Jersey Title Thirty-nine where, you know?
That allows the police to come on for enforcement onsite?
You know, right, handicap parking, stuff like that, uh, overnight parking, that's not permissible, that type of thing?
Paul, that's a question for, for you. That's not, it's a, um, relatively common request in New Jersey. I don't know if they, if you did that at your other locations in, uh, South Brunswick, Ruppin Bergen County.
I think we do.
He asks for every application, honestly.
Yeah, so Jennifer, can you just explain that to me again?
It basically says that you allow the police to come on your site and enforce. You know, you're not gonna, you know, if there's people are like loitering on your site or someone's not parked, you know, in a handicap spot legally, those types of things, they just kind of have the ability to come onsite and enforce the basic traffic stuff.
Got it. No problem.
You don't want no part, partying overnight on your property, you know?
I agree. We don't want it either. Big investment here. We don't want.
Almost in your best interest, honestly.
Without a doubt. Thank you.
And we're, um, all right, that, um, I think addresses our direct testimony um, from our architect. Again, I, I know there were comments, certainly Jen, in your letter, I don't recall.
No, but they addressed all my comments in my latest letter. They've addressed all the issues and the architecture was revised and I'm very happy with what they have provided. So they have addressed, it's very unusual for an application to come to this board, as Mr. Fay can tell you, where I've said that they have addressed my concerns on their architecture.
I'm glad we are taking this down by the record.
You can mark it down. It's a moment.
Because Gonchar, our like, um, I don't recall, um, if the engineer, if there was anything that would be relevant for this witness. I was just flipping, um, I think there was some landscaping, lighting and signage. So I don't know if we've covered those items to the engineer's satisfaction.
I think they've been covered, uh, Mr. Say, and then, um, I don't have any additional architectural questions for, for the applicant, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
That, that, does Mr. Dwayne have anything he wants to add?
No, I think that, well, go ahead. We don't have any questions, but if Dwayne wants to say something, he can certainly.
Kirk covered everything. I do not.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
It's a well-prepared witness. Um, uh, uh, obviously the, I don't know if the board has any questions, but those, that would, um, complete our direct for this witness.
Okay, does the board have any questions of this witness?
Mr. Chairman, is Miss Beam happy? I'm happy.
Okay, Mr. Cantor.
I love the creativity with the, uh, the loading dock and it's, uh, really is a, a, a nice looking building, so absolutely no questions and happy with, yeah, happy with the changes.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Anyone else? Not hearing any?
Chairman, I would request a five-minute break, please.
Ms. Gonchar, if it's okay with you, the board would like to take five, can we take ten?
Okay, I was gonna say I'd give you seven, but go ahead.
Meeting will now take a ten-minute break and reconvene at nine sixteen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good call, Matt.
We're good, um. Ms. Gonchar?
Yes, our next witness is Michelle Brahoff, uh, from Colliers, who is our traffic engineer. Uh, she's been sworn. If we can have her qualified, um, we can get started with some very brief direct from her. Ready?
Yes.
Hi, Michelle. Um, all right, can you please, um, um, give the board your name again, please, and then also please advise them of, um, licenses that you hold uh, in any employment or educational background that you think would be helpful, uh, for the board to know.
Sure, so, uh, my name is Michelle Brahoff. I am the department manager for the transportation planning group, um, at Colliers Engineering and Design. Um, I have a civil and environmental engineering degree from Northeastern University. Um, I've been a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since twenty fourteen. Um, I have testified for Howell before. I'm actually from Howell. Um, I live in Howell. So, um, I don't remember if it was planning or zoning, but, um, locally I've also been before called snack free holds uh, wall many times. Um, so those are other local boards that I have been before.
And they have accepted you as an expert in the field of, uh, traffic engineering in particular?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for accepting her as an expert in the field of, uh, traffic engineering. Um, can you briefly just advise the board, um, what, um, any report or document that was submitted? And then just, uh, discuss with the board from a traffic perspective, relevant information with regard to the project we're proposing.
Sure, so, um, like any, uh, traffic planning study, we did do a traffic, uh, study of this site. Um, that includes, um, collecting data along Route nine adjacent to the site um, and then projecting the amount of traffic that we would forecast for a site like this. Um, as you've heard from Mr. Avento, this is a rather unique site, um, and the fact that uh, the types of sales and what will be happening at this facility doesn't exactly fit into, um, what we typically reference, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Um, they produce a trip generation handbook, which will typically give us data for, uh, hundreds of different land uses. Um, and like Mr. Avento said, this is a rather unique use. Um, so in this case, what we did was we actually used, um, automobile sales, because that was the closest thing, uh, that IT would provide. Um, and given the, the trip generation estimates and what this facility will generate um, in comparison to a, a Toyota dealership for, for, uh, comparison was, um, a very conservative estimate. So we were taking the most conservative trip generation estimates that we possibly could, uh, to forecast the traffic for this study. Um, with that, we still found that the site driveways will operate at acceptable levels of service. Um, and that we, um, you know, we satisfy the ordinance parking requirement and our onsite circulation. So really that was the, the gist of our traffic impact study. Now separately, um, what we've had to do for this application is that since it's on Route nine, um, we had to submit a, an access permit to the New Jersey Tri- Department of Transportation. Um, that is in process right now. We've submitted it. It's been reviewed, um, and we have responded to those comments. Uh, so we are also well on our way with our access application for DOT. Um, and that, that's really where we are from, from a traffic perspective. Um, like I said, I think we are definitely, um, being the most conservative in our analysis um, compared to what this facility will generate. And with that, we find that the, the driveway will operate safely and efficiently.
All right, let me just confirm the traffic impact study that you prepared was referred to as the traffic impact study and that is exhibit A six. Uh, just to confirm that the, uh, so that the board knows what you're referring to. When you speak about something being conservative, let me make sure I understand. When you look at the IT, since there isn't something that is specific to truck sale and leasing and particularly municipally oriented truck sale and leasing as been described by Mr. Avento on the record, um, i- i- is your, in your testimony that when you looked at IT, the closest comparable, which really is somewhat distinct, was automobile deal sales, uh, or dealership. And when you say conserv- sorry.
And, and that would really be like your Honda, Toyota, um, any of those automobile sales that you see up on, up and down Route nine. Or any.
And so when you said conservative, is it your, what, what you're conveying is that the numbers for anticipated trip generations that were revealed in IT were substantially higher than what's anticipated from this proposed use. And therefore you're doing what I would call a worst case or way worse case scenario than what's actually anticipated in terms of the testimony from Mr. Avento for what's anticipated in terms of number of trips here compared to what would be in a car dealership where people stop there and look at cars and leave and, and, and there's a more constant flow.
Right, and that's correct too. And also, um, just to, for, to note as well, um, that obviously you guys are aware that this is an existing facility for, for used cars. Um, and we did not take into consideration any of the traffic that is currently, um, utilizing that site. Um, so we didn't, again, to be that worst case scenario, ultra-conservative, um, we did not account for, for the traffic that's currently, um, entering and exiting that site.
Okay, and in terms of the onsite circulation, um, you also testified that we need or exceed the required parking. But in terms of circulation in your analysis of, uh, the adequacy, um, and safe operation of the, um, drive aisles, they are of adequate width. Is that accurate for, uh, to allow the move, the two-way movements where they're proposed?
Right, um, so we did review the onsite circulation, um, and we find that the, the site is more than adequate to accommodate the the design vehicles, which would be your, your box truck, your garbage truck, um, and then as well as the, the trucks that will be um, sold and, you know, delivered to this site, so.
All right, um, and, um, the last question would be, the emergency vehicles can also safely access and circulate the site to gain access to the building as might, God forbid, be required.
That's correct. Yes, we also did, um, I believe, prepare a, a truck turning exhibit to de- to demonstrate that as well.
Okay, uh, that's really all we have on, um, on our direct. This is, uh, but for the, um, condition, um, some portion of the condition, uh, this is otherwise, um, uh, anticipated as a permitted use on the site. And, uh, we'll discuss with our planner, but those items that we don't need, um, don't really go to, to trip generation. So, uh, it, certainly if the board or their consultants have any questions, that would be, um, all of our direct for this witness, subject to our right of recall.
Thank you, Charlie. Um, Fire Bureau?
Uh, it is my understanding that the Fire Bureau did not have any significant, uh, comments or issues with the application. They're providing thirty-six foot wide circulation aisles or at least a thirty-six foot wide entrance into the site and then thirty-foot minimum, uh, you know, circulation aisles around the building and throughout the site. So I think from a fire perspective, uh, you know, i- it's adequate. The only thing that I would say is, you know, if the fire official typically requires any circulation lanes, straight to spiral lanes and signage, the site plan's obviously got to be revised accordingly and of course with any requirements of the fire official. Um, as far as the access to the site, obviously it's Route nine, so they, uh, it's a DOT, uh, right away. They're going to dictate on, uh, you know, any comments or concerns or questions regarding the site access regarding trips. Um, uh, I think as far as the access permit, it's, they're making you get a lot consolidation permit as part of that too, right, Michelle?
Yes, that's correct.
And then, as far as you said that the site driveway would operate at an acceptable level of service, can you just give a reference? What, what it was in the conservative analysis? what it was in the conservative analysis, the actual level of service?
Yep, so typically, really, I would say almost all right-in, right-out driveways along Route Nine typically operate at levels of service D or, or worse, I should say. So here we're seeing a level of service D and the PM and a level of service E on Saturday. Which again, is, is pretty typical to what you experience anywhere up and down Route Nine in Howell. Um, and that's really a product of the, the through traffic on Route Nine and not necessarily the the vehicles entering or exiting the site.
And that's based off of a worst-case scenario, like you said, a Toyota dealership, which has much more turnover and traffic, you know, leaving, leaving, and exiting, entering and exiting the site, okay. Um, and then I just wanna, they did add site triangles to the site plan, so just as a condition of approval. If any of those actually encroach onto the property, we'd just ask that it be, you know, provide a D de easement as part of any condition of approval. Um, I had, I think you guys showed the desirable typical section on the circulation plan, I just asked that it be added to the actual site layout plan, just so we can confirm there's no improvements within that. Um, one or two more things that I just want to talk about. DOT, obviously, they're gonna make the final comment and determination on curbing and sidewalk in the public, in the Route Nine right away, so you know, any requirement from our end, Mr. Chair, still has to be, you know, get approval from DOT as well. And then, one of the big concerns that I did have was tractor-trailer traffic, because there was some circulation or it was a little tight on the site, but I think the applicant indicated, obviously, there's no call, car haulers or anything like that, like you see for a typical car dealership. Everything is, you know, one truck kind of towing another onto the site, so you're not gonna see those massive semi-trailers parked on the shoulder and, you know, in the acceleration lane from the bus depot trying to get into the site, so. Um, really, I don't really have any questions. They've agreed to the Title Thirty-nine, I think that's a good thing, Mr. Sayah. You know, allowing to enforce any parking in fire lanes and things like that. I really don't have any other, any other further questions.
Good. Jen?
Nothing for me.
Any of the board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cantor?
Not to throw a monkey wrench in, but Route Nine is a divided highway, and this being New Jersey, trucks coming exiting north to Route Nine that want to go back down south would have to turn at the jug handle Casino Road. And likewise, trucks coming from the north to go into this facility would have to turn at the dug handle on West Farm Road. Was any examination done to that, or is that gonna be, are those jug handles able to accommodate trucks of this size?
Michelle?
Yeah, so again, I don't believe that we're looking at any tractor-trailer type trucks for this facility. So the, the size of the truck would be limited to a dump truck or, you know, a municipal type truck, garbage truck. Um, so, you know, what is going to use those jug handles would be typical for what travels through those jug handles today, up and down Route Nine.
Wait, timeout, aren't you selling the trucks?
Not tractor-trailers, no.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. Thank you.
Any other board members?
I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Agiar, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Very good. Okay. Miss Gonchar?
Thank you, thank you, Michelle. Our last witness is Daniel Block, he is our planner. Who'll offer the testimony in support of the, the D three variances and the C variances and the waivers that we've requested this evening. Again, we had him sworn this evening. Dan, if you could just repeat your name, tell the board with whom you're associated and provide them with information regarding your qualifications, including any licenses that you hold.
Will do. Good evening, board members. Again, Dan Block, B L O C H, with Colliers Engineering and Design. I have a bachelor's degree in environmental design from the University of Buffalo. Licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey and certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've testified before over a hundred planning and zoning boards across New Jersey.
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you for accepting him as an expert in the field of planning. Alright, Dan, can you just discuss the review that you've made in connection with preparation for the testimony, any documents you reviewed? And then we can walk through the requested relief, starting with the D variances, if you would.
Sure, yeah, I've reviewed all of the application documents and exhibits, the town's zoning ordinance and master plan documents. I've visited the site and the surrounding area. I actually took some photos while I was there, which I have an exhibit for. And let me to, to describe the surrounding area, I know everyone's familiar, but I don't think we put up this exhibit that, which really shows the site, so if I can just share this, this was Exhibit Eight Twenty-three, I believe. Eight Twenty, aerial, existing conditions aerial exhibit.
Yes.
Did two twenty-eight, twenty-two. This one up here. Okay, so here's the, this is a zoomed out aerial exhibit showing a lot more of the surrounding area than what we saw earlier this evening. The site is directly next to the driveway for the New Jersey Transit Bus Garage. You can see the large area of wooded area and wetlands to the north of the site, and then across the street. We have that one single-family home, there's another uh, non-residential development across the street. So this site is an existing used car and auto sales lot. And I believe they do auto repair there as well, so you can see it's not a, it's not a very pretty site to look at from above. There's a lot going on, it's very confusing when you try to go there. So again, the site is in the HD One Highway Development District. Permitted uses include a variety of non-residential banks, office, retail, hospitals, restaurants, so on. Conditional uses include auto sales and auto service, auto auction, car wash and gas stations. So we're proposing an auto sales facility, there is some auto service involved in that as well. Which are both conditional use, conditional uses in the HD One Zone. We are looking for D three variance relief for not complying with all of those conditions of the auto sales use. The first one is from Section eighty, one eighty-eight dash eighty-nine A, which refers to Section two fifty-six dash five B three, which is the number of signs. And that section says that you're permitted one freestanding sign. And what we're proposing is two freestanding signs and six wall signs. So you're allowed two signs and we're proposing eight. So we are looking for a D three conditional use variance relief from that one. We're also looking for another D three variance for the size of the monument sign. The ordinance requires monument signs to be not greater than twelve feet long by three feet high or four feet long by ten feet high, excluding the base. And what is proposed is a monument sign of eight point one feet long and six feet high with a three point six seven foot high base, so we are looking for relief for that, the size of that sign. And then the third part of that D three variance we're looking for is the vehicle repair portion, it says no facilities for automobile body repair or mechanical repair shall be permitted to be located on the premises used for sales and showrooms of newer used automobiles, except for those necessary for the preparation or maintenance of automobiles sold upon the premises and only where the said facilities are clearly incidental and subordinate to the principal use. So we're not exactly in compliance with that section, while it will be used in that manner to prepare these trucks for sales to the customers, as was previously testified to. There, they also, we are also requesting the ability to service vehicles that may have been purchased at other sites. So, so this will be another service center for those municipal trucks in this area that may have been purchased somewhere else, but this may be more convenient for them. So those are the three D three variances we're looking for. As the board is probably aware, the Coventry case, Coventry Square case is, says that we don't need to show special reasons that the site is particularly suited here for the positive criteria. We're only required to demonstrate that the site can accommodate the problems associated with the deviations from the required conditions, so the, the site does remain appropriate for the use. It is considered a permitted use and not a prohibited use despite not meeting all of those conditions. The applicant is proposing private redevelopment of the existing auto sales, used auto sales and auto repair facility, which is in not great condition, it is sort of an eyesore on the community. It will be replaced with a new, brand-new building visually appealing and up to current standards in terms of site design. The site is over two and a half times the minimum lot area, so it can easily accommodate the proposed use without any substantial detriments to the surrounding. And we are, the proposed development will be in compliance with all the other bulk requirements of the HD One Zone, so it's just those the signage and then the use of the service facility.
I mean, Dan, that's not true. I mean, I don't take exception, but they, you don't meet the buffer requirements, which is required in every zone.
Right, but that's not a, thanks for interrupting, Jen, but that's not a bulk requirement of the HD One Zone, which is what I'm referring to. I understand your point, but in terms of the setbacks and lot coverage, it is complying with all of those other requirements. We are requesting, we are requesting both variances from the buffer requirements.
Right, and the, so you're, you're referring, your testimony refers to the specific standards applicable to the zone where it's located, is that?
The bulk standard with the HD One.
The bulk standard of the HD One Zone.
Yes, okay.
Respectfully, I'm just trying to move this along because it's getting late, and I know the board has heard a lot of testimony already, so I would just get to it.
Okay, and just to clarify, so it's only the fact that we will be servicing vehicles really that may not have been purchased here, but may have actually been purchased at one of the other Gabrielli or that the municipal customer had purchased, that brings us outside of the specific requirement of item E that you were referring to under one eighty-eight dash eighty-nine?
Correct, yeah, so in terms of negative impacts, I believe there's no substantial detriments caused by the D three variance that's being requested. The site can easily accommodate that type of use as part of this facility. It will still remain an accessory component of the business and ancillary to the primary truck sales use.
And the sign variances are the same that are applicable generally? And is there, you heard the testimony earlier with regard to the signs and the testimony from the architect as to why they were requesting the number and the location, and the size of the signs rather, not the location. And based upon that testimony, does that further enforce your testimony with regard to the ability of the site to accommodate the conditional use even with these deviations from the sign ordinance?
Yes, and the other thing I would point out, as I mentioned, the other exhibit, and I'll put it up here just real quick, which is A twenty-six, I believe. I did take some photos, the first one is from Google Street View, because I didn't want to get out in the middle of the street to take the photo. But you can see the number of existing freestanding signs along this frontage, so the number of signs, although we're proposing eight signs, two of them will be freestanding, which will vastly improve the view of the frontage. The other ones are more of a wayfinding type of signage on the building to help direct traffic into the site and to where they need to go, which part of the building, so you can just see some of these existing signs, they're not in great conditions, but they are there. And this just the grit, the condition of the front of the property, you have vehicles parked all the way out up against the roadway. Here's some more of the existing freestanding signs. This bus actually decided to park there to go look at new cars that day to purchase, so we're improving that condition of providing parking for vehicles, so.
Okay, if we can move on now, the next ones, I know we've heard a lot of testimony also. Oh, I guess I should ask you, unless I missed it, can we also meet the criteria, the negative criteria with regard to the D variance, that is the, the comparison to the zone plan and zoning ordinance?
Yes, I believe that we do meet that, that negative criteria. There's no substantial detriment to the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. I did look at the zoning ordinance, and there's a purpose of the HD One Zone, which is to provide for highway oriented development on larger lots, which is what we have proposed here, and I believe we do further the goals and objectives of the master plan. So we, and then moving on to the C variances.
Good.
As, as Jen mentioned, we are looking for a number of bulk variances from the buffer requirements.
Before you go on, let me just ask, Mr. Sayad, do you feel you need additional testimony on the buffer relief? Or do you feel like that Ms. Algeo provided adequate testimony earlier about the buffers with respect to the environmentally sensitive areas, the width of Route Nine, the, the bus depot behind, or do you feel like you need additional testimony in that regard?
Well, I'd like to ask Shari how she feels about the buffer requirements with regards to plantings that are gonna take place, and does she feel that they're sufficient as well?
Um, well, I did ask for the shrubs along Route Nine to be increased in size to meet your requirement for the parking lot, so at least the landscaping will be fuller once, I'm assuming they're gonna comply with my technical comments.
Yes, I'm, I'm just gonna confirm with, I don't believe that there were comments that were, were yours in the
That was in my, it was in a separate letter.
Right, which I'm trying to pull up.
It's from February twenty-fifth.
Right. The I'm, yeah, I'm looking at the I think we were fine.
Yeah, I asked, I just, I asked for an increase on the, it's an evergreen hedge, and then I had some comments on species selection.
Right.
Just to prevent, you know, damage from snow mounding and vehicle overhang. Also, there's a shrub proposed that's not for full sun, so I asked for changes on that. Besides that, I mean, they have a lot of landscaping along the side, along the north side, so and that's already wooded anyway. Yeah, I agree with the, you know, prior testimony about that, you know, it's a the site will look much improved from its existing condition.
Got it, thank you. Any of the board members have any questions regards to the setbacks, the buffers, etc.?
I just had one, Shari, I think there was one item, which was your, we were okay with your item for A, C, D, E, F, and G, the only one that I think that that we had had a question about was item B. The, which is the, the curved area at the front of the building. Do you have your item B, which this applicant should review the proposed curved concrete parking lot island? You have your item B, which this applicant should review the proposed curved concrete parking lot island at the southwest corner.
Yeah. Does that have to be curve of concrete?
We preferred to keep it as it was designed and we also if we did put anything in there, we'd like to keep it low. So it isn't that, you know, some kind of ground cover, something very low in a portion of it. So there's adequate place for people to walk in also so that it doesn't block the, the front of the building. So we're be happy to work with you. We're not opposed. We just didn't want to end up with the, with trees right in front that close to the building or anything like that. So that was the only one that we had had a, a question about. And we did, we did advise that we were that we were adding in the additional trees. So that changed the number slightly for the, that tree decline. So that was our only, we'd be happy to work with you about what could go there, but we did prefer to keep more of it in the, in its current design.
Okay.
I, I don't mean since I'm, I am, I appreciate Jen that we do have most in the record. I just want to make sure that we have the, the negative criteria in for our variances. The C variances that we make sure they're in and that we've identified all of them and then just to run through to make sure we also have whatever proofs are necessary to support the waivers that we've requested.
I mean, I would submit to Mr., to the chairman that I feel and it totally, I'm not trying to take away from your presentation.
We're good with the buffers, Jen.
Right. So I, I'm not trying to take away from your presentation, Merrill. I'm just saying that like if there were issues with the buffers when Julia presented it, it would have come up. So I feel like the board, if they had concerns with the northern buffer along the environmentally sensitive area along what's pharmacist, which is not actively farmed and has an active application for solar, the, the east, which is the truck depot and then across Route nine, which is the residence, which is, you know, a little bit much, but I understand that's what the ordinance requires. I would submit as the board's professional that there are no negative impacts associated with the board granting that relief that in order to because of the nature of the application, the location and the benefits associated with what you're proposing. In addition, Mr. Chair, do you feel that there needs to be additional testimony with respect to the signage? I feel like there was adequate testimony from the architect associated with the signage. I take no exception to it. There were concessions made with respect to when the signs would, would become turned off in terms of illumination an hour after closing, just to be consistent with everything. And, and again, Merrill, I'm not trying to take over your case at all. I'm just trying to read the, read the room and, and recognize that if there were concerns, they would have brought them up. So if there's additional issues that the board wants to bring up, I'm more than willing to, to stand corrected. But I do feel like you guys have put on a very comprehensive case. I think the application is a huge benefit to the area. And I think in general, I, I take no exception to any of the relief that you've asked for. And I, I would submit that to the board.
You, you, you put me in the position where we have the testimony on the record. If you feel that this is consistent as the attorney, it's my job to make sure I have a record that can withstand a challenge if anybody were to bring it. So I appreciate that you've put on the, that we do have a planning testimony. And I guess we can accept the planning testimony of the board's planner. Daniel, is there anything else in summary that you want to say just so that we can wrap this up? Having heard what the board's planner has said with regard to
Happen often, just so you know.
I agree with everything Jen said. I think the board should grant all the relief we're requesting.
Yes, Merrill, let's go.
Well, okay, when the client tells me, I put my position on the record. And as, since there seems to be consensus that we now meet the architectural requirements, those have been eliminated from have been eliminated from here. You're satisfied with the screening now, whether that really still requires a waiver or not. I leave that to the board to determine. And, and I think we've been sort of giving our marching orders with regard to the sidewalk waiver that we've requested. We do advise two things. One, there is a, an easement that has been being finalized with regard to the sewer that runs along that area as well. And since whatever gets ripped up to work on that sewer line is going to have to be replaced. I mentioned that with regard to the sidewalk because the township's the one is going to have to put the sidewalk back in if they have to work there. And as you've noted, whether the sidewalk is ultimately permitted, if it's within the right of way, DOT is actually going to have the final word on that. So we understand the board's position, but as long as it's acknowledged that it's subject to jurisdiction of DOT that we would we would rest and, and ask the board to act favorably on our application. Once they open it to the public, I guess.
So the only thing I want to add is that as, as the board is aware, we've always asked for sidewalk along Route nine. And the DOT has always allowed us to, to have the sidewalk put in, in there right away, as long as it's four foot wide concrete. You know, initially we had asked historically for some ridiculous width of a sidewalk and they basically said, no, so long as it's typical four foot wide concrete sidewalk, they have been supportive of us extending the sidewalk in that way. So agreed. If they say no, it's their right of way. But in general, our, the history has proven that they have allowed it. But I agree.
I don't predict, I don't predict DOT. I'm not a gambling person. Generally in estate agency, I wouldn't bet on one way or the other, but I hear you. I'm not disputing it. I'm just suggesting that that needs to be, that's the only qualification with regard to that requirement.
Agreed.
So that, that completes our direct case. If the board has any additional questions, all of our witnesses are available. And, and I think your practice was to open it when all of the witnesses were done and all of our witnesses are here, if any members of the public have questions.
We will move in that direction in just a second. Charlie, do you have anything that you want to say?
Yeah, just I want to add a couple of quick comments. So just to clarify, Mr. Say, I did look at the Fireborough's most recent memo. They had the same comments like we thought about strip and fire lane signage. They also had a comment about fire hydrant being four feet behind a curb line. I think that's referring to a hydrant along the Route nine that's going to get relocated. So obviously they'll have to comply with those as a condition of any approval. Ms. Contra alluded to the township since in the process of getting an easement. So I believe it's extends super made across the property frontage with the applicants, which the applicant is going to connect to. Going along with that, there are some existing wells and septic systems on the property. So they'll have to get any certificate of abandments for those existing systems as part of residential compliance. That's all from Monmouth County Board of Health, but they'll have to just provide it for the board's record. A couple of just other environmental things. Ms. Aljo's testimony at the last hearing, she indicated that they had a pending LOI and then I think also FHA verification with DEP. We just asked that, any verifications in the LOI and any resulting permits be provided for the board's record? And that the EIR be revised to reflect those when they are received. And then I just want to note the, in the EIR, it notes that the site does have an active LSRP for some remediation going on with the prior historic use of that site. Obviously the applicant's going to have to resolve that as part of, you know, the process of the, you know, with their LSRP prior to any redevelopment of the site. So I just wanted to put that on the record, but it is noted in the EIR and, you know, I, I think obviously, you know, their LSRP is going to have to sign up before any final development can take place on the site. Other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Good stuff, Charlie. Thank you. Mr. Agar, you're familiar with the LSRP?
I am. I've dealt with it on other pieces of property. Now I'm satisfied that they will do their due diligence.
Thank you, sir. Board members, any questions before we open it up to a public for questions in common?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm good.
I'm, I'm perfect, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'm good too, sir.
Good. Jose, Matt, okay, got it. Got it. Okay. So, you know, what's the pleasure of the board with regards to opening up the, the comment? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we open this hearing for comment to the public, from the public.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, sir.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Eileen?
Do not open the meeting to public. If you are calling in, you could press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself. There is no one from public raising their hand.
And no one calling in, Eileen?
No.
Okay, it's getting late.
Motion to close, Mr. Chairman.
The public, Martin's second.
Second.
Got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eileen, we close the public.
Meeting is now closed to public.
Can you just, maybe Andy, if, if someone can just, do we, how many members do we have qualified to vote? Who may have, may be qualified based on certification that they've either listened or read something, or have all of the members been, were they at the previous? I'm just trying to figure out where we stand.
I think based on discussions earlier, there are six members eligible. Is that, Eileen?
Hi, Mr. Rose. Did you certify?
Did.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Six members and the, and to the board's clear, you need five affirmative votes.
Mr. Gonzalez, did you certify?
Yes.
Good. So board members, there's six of us that are eligible to certify and vote. Does anyone on the board feel that it's necessary for us to push this to a vote? Allowing for a seventh member to vote, or do we feel that we're liking the way this thing is going? Over.
I'm feeling confident, sir.
That's okay.
Mr. Chairman, I agree.
Concur.
Then we feel comfortable then to proceed to a vote this evening, knowing the, the client is looking at me, knowing that we need to vote a five out of those six, but we feel quite confident. And this is a once in a lifetime, apparently. So I'm going to quit while I'm ahead and ask if the board would vote. And because I'm beginning to learn, you can teach an old dog new tricks. If, if it's acceptable to the board, you don't have to hear me give a summation because I think your planner took care of that.
Why I'm here, Merrill.
Want to make sure this is being recorded because I think this is history being made for Merrill.
Getting me not to speak is, is also unusual.
Mr. Bear?
We're good.
You're good, Mr. Chairman. The matter is ripe for consideration if there's a motion.
Very good. Okay, board members, you know, what's the pleasure of the board on this particular application? whom we've heard an awful lot of testimony, due diligence and appears both inside and outside to be a significant improvement to the site. Over.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, based on the testimony put on record, I concur that this is a excellent improvement to the site. I think the architectural part of it is one of the best I've seen on my ears on the zoning board. So I want to comment the architects for a great job. And also I believe we like to keep the farmland buffer. I know Mr. Chairman Nansen's very particular about that, but in this situation, I agree, there's absolutely no reason to cut it off. So my motion is to approve.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Mr. Mr. Chair, I would like to add also to, to Mr. Mertens about the, you know, all the testimony, but the, the couple of specific things that we brought up tonight. Jennifer wanted to see the, the retaining wall detail. So we'd like to see that come in, of course. On the sidewalk issue, we'd like to see the sidewalk. And of course, the, we kind of beat the sign lighting into the ground, but just to put it on record again, you know, off by eleven or an hour after closing. And with all that, I would also like to add that it is a beautiful building and I say, I second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and we got a second for moving forward with an approval. Eileen, can we have a vote, please?
Mr. Cantor.
Mr. Vento, I want to let you know, on behalf of Howell Township, thank you very much for bringing your business and your company Gabriella Trucking to Howell. Please relay our appreciation also to, to all the ownership concerned. And I'm pleased to vote yes to this.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Murrins.
Yes.
Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Galis.
Yes.
And Chairman Saya.
You know, I weighing the overall good of this application against a sliver of that farmland buffer and the criteria of where it stands. You know, it's hard to swallow because of all the years that we've fought for our fifty foot, but I'm going to vote yes on this application. Thank you.
Application is approved.
Thank you so much for your patience in hearing us and we look forward. I know the client's very eager to become a corporate citizen in Howell. So we thank you for your approval and for your consideration.
Thank you all very much. We really appreciate it. And I would like to Gabrielle's know right away your decision. Thank you. And you're going to have a wonderful project in the future. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Mr. Bear?
I think that's the last matter for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, board members, thank you for your service. And, and professionals, thank you.
You're free to leave, Mr. Chair.
And thank you. And I would, I would ask that everyone have a great night and ask for a motion to
Before we, real fast, before we close, can we please keep Cameron Nansen and Mr. Moretti in our prayers for speedy recoveries for both of them?
Amen, Mr. Cantor. Amen.
Absolutely. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, team. So can I have a motion to close and I, Eileen, Eileen will put out the, the next meeting agenda. So we have a motion to close. We got a second?
Whatever you need.
You don't want to leave?
Whatever you need.
All right, everyone. You all have a good night then. Eileen?
Night.
The evening is over, Eileen.
Aye.
Good night.
Night.
Night, everyone.
Night, everyone.